Today's time he was going to read classes, so we're gonna call the city council meeting of the city of Dunsmere to order at 6:01 PM. We will begin with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, now moving into go call please.
I am here.
Who am I?
The president.
Mr. Geisler.
Here.
President. President, thank you. Well, now moving to item number three, which is special presentations and announcements. And tonight we have the Siskiess Science Festival, so please take your light.
Thank you. I'm Amy Now, and uh...
Actually, I think maybe helpful if you're at the light, because the chair will just still work from here from there.
I'm Jessica Matthews. I'm the event coordinator for the Siskiess Science Festival.
And I'm Jeanne Now, the executive director at Mount Shasta Siskiess Museum and also the executive director of Siskiess Science Festival. We appreciate this opportunity of being here. I'm just going to show you a short video overview of the last two science festivals. How many of you have heard about the science festival before? All right, wonderful. Maybe you were there last year? Okay, great. All right. This um, isn't working. So we'll just talk through it. Yes, so this was the science festival from 2018 and 2019. 2018, we were able to be out on the street. 2019, remember the rainstorm? So we were inside Siskiess School. There are many, many booths that the people can do. These are all volunteer organizations, people that want to let the community know about what they're doing. We have school activities. We do school activity days. The kids get very involved in the activities. And volunteers do it all again. We get key talent from other places to come make it even more exciting for the children. And this year, we're expanding to many different school districts. We also have free presentations. I don't know if any of you saw USGS when they came up here. And we asked them, "How active is Mount Shasta?" And they said, "We have a very boring volcano." And we also have people from other organizations. We had Ms. Frizzle come. She is really a physics teacher from New York. And she did an activity on gravitational waves and was interactive. People got to see how gravitational waves work. Then there's free tours. And this is one thing that last year, we had a tour to the Dough Hook Bakery here. We went to Denny Bar. We went on Forest Service tours, geology tours, Scott River Ranch. It's a way for people to see what's happening in our local businesses. And so people get to experience the marvels of science in our daily lives. So we're hoping you will be able to join us. And one way that you could join us...
So there's different avenues in which people can get involved, one of which is definitely volunteering. We have a lot of events and services that need to be done by individuals, and we're not able to do it by ourselves. In addition to that, we ask for sponsorship of various different avenues as well, whether that's monetary or in-kind contributions, and then exhibitors as well. So our all-day science festival, what we're calling it SciFest, is Saturday, May 16th. It will be held at Siskiess School in Mount Shasta, and it'll be from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And so, Science Festival supports STEAM in our areas at science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. For every dollar that's spent on a science festival, it brings $12 to the local economies in which we're at. And so we're really trying to highlight, celebrate, and promote local businesses and organizations, and celebrate what they're doing in their everyday lives that relates to science. Showcase possible pathways and careers in education, really providing those opportunities and visibility of what anyone can do within the county that maybe they didn't know of ahead of time or before. And so, again, different ways you can get involved. Become an exhibitor. It's free. It's not just free for the participants. It's free for the exhibitors as well. We offer you a 10-foot by 10-foot booth space to highlight what you, the community, your business, your organization, et cetera, is doing. Becoming a volunteer. We need help. And sponsorship as well, because it is free to the county. The whole science festival is May 2nd through May 17th of 2020. We're expanding by a week, and we're hoping to expand to different parts of the county as well. So we're asking you how you can be involved in a more meaningful way this next year.
Thank you.
That's it.
Does the council have any questions tonight?
Oh, man. I have a dream. I actually went to Etna last weekend, because I've never been to Denny Bar. And as I'm traveling up I-5, Siskiess County is a very large county. And the state has aspirations that the I-5 corridor is going to be the electric highway. What if we could get the high schools together in the area to do a small bus fleet? Three or four refitted school buses that were not fossil. They were electric. They were biodiesel. We've got a couple of restaurants in town that actually participate in the biodiesel program. But earlier this year, we decided to spend general fund money supporting Opportunity Siskiess. And if Opportunity Siskiess and you guys could collaborate on a project to do both I-5 and tour-type transportation, I hope that's something we can talk about in the future. I am going to contact Todd in Dallas from Opportunity Siskiess, and I will copy you on the emails.
Opportunity Siskiess or Siskiess?
Or Siskiess.
Uh, so Siskiess is the T-Bed.
Who do we give the money to?
The Siskiess. I think it's...
Siskiess.
Siskiess. Yeah.
I think it'd be a wonderful collaborative project, hands-on for the students in the high school. And thank you so much for doing what you do.
Please, Peter.
Are there any questions tonight from other council members?
Well, I don't know if it's something we've wanted to consider online, but an opportunity to sponsor. So is that something we could put in it to do this, to explore later on?
Uh, we could put it based on Todd and I'm looking at you.
Thank you. Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne.
All right, we'll be moving into item number four, and this is time for our general public comment. And this is the time for speakers to come up and speak on an item that is not on our agenda or on our consent agenda. Before we move into that tonight, I believe item A-E. City manager? So I believe we're going to be taking item A-E off of the consent agenda as of to new business. So if you do have any comments about A-E, which is approving a resolution, calling an election, and requesting consultation, that will be moving to new business, so that will have its own public comment time.
Matt Mayor, I also suggest we move items B. Is consent agenda?
B?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll be moving items A-B and A-D off of the consent agenda into new business. So this is the time that you can come and speak on items A-A, which is a check register for September 27th through October 18th of this year. Item A? No, they can public comment this for if they want to comment on the consent agenda.
Is this public comment or not?
This is going to be general public comment, and this is the time where you can comment on things that are not on the agenda or on the consent agenda. There was just some discussion about taking some consent agenda items off of that and giving them their own public comment time.
Matt Mayor, just to clarify, so A-D is now 11-D.
Correct.
And A-E is?
11-E.
There you go.
Yeah, thank you. So you will have time to just...
Could we make time on item A?
When we get to the, we can rearrange it. I just want to be able to open up general public comment. So if you'd like to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, or the three items that are remaining on our consent agenda, which are items A-A, A-C, and A-D. This is your time. You can come up and do that, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you, everybody. I'm Paris Patrick from Siskiess Media Council and Shasta Avenue here in Dunsmere. And I just wanted to let you know that after a year of work, today, our channels went live online so that people can watch Siskiess Media Council everywhere, all over the world. So there we go. Yay! Having said that, our actual, right now, is not interrupting, because we had to have a piece of equipment refurbished. So that is coming. And so that, this will also be live, but not today. But there you go. Thank you very much.
Is it quick?
Well, for those of us who are not on social media, does that mean it's all on channel one?
Thank you. So it's, thank you very much, Peter. It is siskiessmediacouncil.org. And there is a player right on the front page, and it is the channels, MCTV-15, YCTV, Channel 4. And it's there all the time live. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else with general public comment right on consent agenda or on the agenda?
Good evening. Mike Rodriguez, District Manager for Denture District. I'm here on a good note to invite the city staff and council members. There's a special fundraiser this Saturday night at the Community Building. It's the Halloween Splash, sponsored by Dunstner Rotary and Friends at a Pool, to help with the cost of the pool for the upcoming season. Starts at 6:00. Doors open at 5:00. Tickets are available at Ron's Hardware or the Pizza Factory.
So hopefully... Stay tuned.
Saturday, 26th. Few days away.
But they are $20 at the door.
15. Please, we're buying tomorrow at Pizza Factory or Ron's Hardware. At 15, at the door, they'll be 20. And we have about 60 people committed already, and I'm sure we're going to hit the 75 mark for planning. So I'd like to invite everybody here to come participate. A lot of good food. Key Cool's going to be catering. A lot of donated, outside of auction, and plenty of delicious desserts are going to be auctioned off. So, again, I just wanted to make a public invitation to the city of Dunstner, council members and staff.
I understand Rotary's running full more.
Yes, Rotary is...
That's safer pool.
A key player. They are, they got Friends at a Pool Committee, and we've been working for about the last six weeks. So it's here, and so we wanted to invite you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Treasurer of the city of Dunsmere, city council, I would prefer the job as treasurer to be more in the background. I believe my job is more of a support of a team effort. My letter of the year was created with many efforts from many people who care a lot about the city of Dunsmere and are aware of the conditions on the ground, so to speak. My desire tonight was to speak to you about the preparatory charges and administrative fees associated with TUT and Bradley or state tax, and try to steer your way from rushing in to the March election. We will not receive enough revenues from these strings to help us with next year's budget, enough to be worth a gamble of it passing. But there is no more pressing business in front of this council than its present budget deficit of $91,000. City government leadership should be prioritizing this as a first topic every meeting. I have noticed that Randy Johnson first and now Todd have dropped from reporting out budget impact in the staff reports and the council packets. Finance committee, when creating a budget, padded the city revenues with increased property tax figures, marijuana revenues in this year's budget, against the city manager, financial manager, and treasurer's vice to wait until proceeds started coming in. These will only add the deficit of our budget. The city finance committee hasn't met since September 19th. Our audit for the past year has not even started. This is nerve-wracking, because the last audit created 100,000 deficit by a single unforeseen journal entry. Finance committee reported out that Arthur Bryant agreed to the tax increase proposals, but failed to report a vote from the committee at large or the treasurer's disagreement with proposed taxes and how council intended to proceed with them. A complete stovepipe. The city has two counselors that have never served on the finance committee, one at eight years, one at four years of tenure. They continue to ignore budget consequences at the airport and the financial requirements for a full-time code enforcement officer. Finance committee in the city of Dunsmere has always had a mayor in attendance. With all this being stated, yet this council continues to consider spending requests. It is a time for leadership at council to deal with the deficit. The city needs to raise solid waste fees with the coming of contract. And the current TUT and TOT proposals will not be enough to sustain the city without another in a couple of years at this rate of spending and the depletion of the reserve.
I just want to reiterate, we will also have another public comment session for the March 2020 county election item. So that will also have its own public comment if you'd like to say for that. Are there any other general public comments tonight, or any comments on consent agenda items A, C, or D? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to council and staff member comments. I'll begin with staff tonight, so we have two questions.
So in terms of G business?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Just any comments that you have besides anything that's on the agenda?
Um, one in that we have received a Cal OES grant in the amount of $18,000 and change that will help us put together a disaster preparedness advisor, recovery plan in the city.
Alright. Thank you.
Good news.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's it.
Alright, thank you. See you guys around here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. During the city's contract negotiations with the sheriff's office, the council expressed an interest in having a a second man or a Barney figure, if you will. So we, I've been mentioning that we're going to introduce this guy to you, and his name is Sam Kubowitz. He's guy seated to my left here. So he's been selected to be the second, kind of second commander of the sheriff's office.
Sorry?
That's right. Yeah. So just a little bit about him. Sam Kubowitz is a Siskiess County native, was raised in the Mount Shasta area. He's currently a senior deputy with our department. He's got about 15 years of law enforcement experience, the first two of which started at Mount Shasta Police Department. He's currently on a promotional list for sergeant. Has been a K-9 officer for eight years. And I can tell just by working with him that he's very knowledgeable of the Dunstner area. There's oftentimes I come to him and ask him about information, about people that we're looking for, or I'll send him pictures of suspects that we have. Hey, Sam, do you know who this is? More often than not, he's aware of who the person is. So he's been selected because of these key characteristics. I think he's going to really be a benefit to the city. We are currently on opposite shifts right now, so when I'm on night shift, he's going to be the day shift contact. So city hall will be seeing him, and he'll be spending time in the Dunstner substation. Remember, so he's a good qualified deputy. He's very proactive. We've seen him around the city quite a bit. And I think he's the best selection that we have as far as our options in the South County area. So, Sam Kubowitz, everybody? I think it's preferred to E not be called Barney, though, so I'll put that out there before he has to let you know about that. So our, on to the September report. For the month of September, we had 523 hours patrol time, 157 hours of, or 157 total calls for service, which did include self-initiated activity. We took 19 cases, 20 traffic-related stops, wrote 10 citations, three arrests. Among those arrests, there were two felony bookings and four misdemeanor bookings. So I want to draw your attention to this map here on my left. This is a map that Councilman Deutsch put together for the Neighborhood Watch. I'm going to start using this to mark up the different events that happen during the months for my report each month. So it's not the best handwriting in the world, but you can, the public can get a general idea of where the crimes are occurring if they're interested in taking a look at the map. So some of the arrest details for the month of September, we had misdemeanor public intoxication and resisting arrest on Dunstner Avenue, a felony warrant arrest on Dunstner Avenue, and then another felony warrant and two misdemeanor arrests on another area in Dunstner Avenue. Then, some of the calls for service, we had, no burglaries, actually, we had two burglaries for September. One was a vehicle burglary on Castle Avenue, and then another was a vacation rental on River Avenue. We had five petty thefts that were all in the Dunstner Avenue area. We had no salt batteries and one vandalism on Siskiess Way. And then, as usual, we had many disturbing police calls all over the city. Any questions from the public council before I step down?
Sergeant, if you would, I know we've talked about this before, but I'd like really for you to share this, if you would, with the general public. Looking back on the summer and in general, looking at crime in the city, how would you characterize the crime level, particularly after we've had a little bit of reduction? What, how would you characterize where we are in the large picture of crime?
Well, I don't think that there's been any noticeable difference in the crime levels since the negotiation of the new contract. Everybody knows that we did drop the numbers down, but there was no crime statistics that have suggested that we were adversely affected.
Yeah.
I think it was, I think it was a good summer. When it comes to crime statistics, it was nothing unusual about it. So, but I wanted to reinforce with the council and with the public that the city of Dunsmere is the most highly patrolled area in South County when it comes to the sheriff's office. And we have saturated patrol here all through the day and night. So the number of hours that we've had to drop down, the city had to drop down for the negotiation purposes, is, I'm not seeing it as having any kind of adverse effect on law enforcement operations in the city of Dunsmere. So we are still going to be here. We're still going to respond to every call. We're still going to be available to the public.
Yay. Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, well now move on to council comments. I'll start with number four.
I had the pleasure, the honor to be invited up to Bend, Oregon a week ago for Ford Family Foundation Community Builders Summit. It had about 200 people, most of them from Oregon, since the Ford Family Foundation is an Oregon organization. At the same time, Siskiess County is part of that. And I've been involved with the Ford Family Institute, working with the Siskiess Revitalization Network, which is still ongoing. This event up there was very encouraging. There was 200 people. There were people from Maine and New Hampshire that drew across to be there, and there was a lot of good strategies and ideas on how to help nurture the community that we have. Working with Sergeant Webstein, I know that we've struggled with trying to find a way to get the Neighborhood Watch off the ground in terms of getting people involved. And I think what we've come to the realization is, is that what we're really dealing with here, and we can put the label Neighborhood Watch over to the side for a second. It's really about 15 different neighborhoods up there. It's really about taking each one of those smaller neighborhoods, not just North Dunsmere and South Dunsmere, but trying to find a way in each one to kind of get a little bit of a growth of community feeling. I know that in Neighborhood Six, for instance, they've already done that. They've gone around to everybody in their neighborhood, they've gotten information who they are. And so when, if something were to happen, they would be able to reach out and help them. And so what we're going to be working on, based on that going forward, and we talked about it before, but is a building Dunsmere's future, which I'm going to try and have done in April. And the goal for that will be to have a day where old, new, young, old get together and talk about what the past of the city has been, what values we want to carry forward, and what the future is. And particularly with so many new people that have moved into the city, it's a matter of welcoming them aboard, getting them feeling comfortable with the community, getting to know their neighbors, and in turn, then working on preventing crime through Neighborhood Watch, et cetera. So we'll be working on that going forward, and that's all I have for now.
Alright, thank you very much. Council member Ryan?
Oh, yeah, it's been quite some time since we've met. I know it's only a month ago. But just before the statement, I'd just like to say thank you to the chamber for maybe everything it took to pull that event off. I thought it was quite a success, more local faces there than out of town. Local meetings surrounding the South County area. And I'd just like to thank you guys for the hard work, for that. I know it wasn't easy this particular year with your situation. I'd also like to say that myself, council member Geisler, and Deutsch just returned from the LEED California Cities Conference, the annual conference. I just want to report that I learned a great deal about how cities are run. A lot of resources were there. I got to hear the top lawyers talk about ethics training for city councils, which should encourage everyone here. And I got to just experience, a lot of the problems we face here are experienced mainly by larger cities all across California. And that some things that we think are on a particular flight are really something shared by the rest of California. That being said, I was inspired to put my name in the hat for being on the policy committee. This one's on housing and economic development. I think it's important that small cities represent through this committee, because you know, most of these people are, you know, council members from LA, San Francisco, San Jose. That tends to be a lot of the focus of the policy when it comes to lobbying. But I hope to serve in the future on this committee and have a little city like Dunsmere be able to have better representation when it comes to the lobbying dollars of this larger organization. Well said. And I'd like to respond briefly to our treasurer, Maria Rubino's comments. I'd like to refer everyone who's interested in what we're discussing back to the Dunsmere Finance Committee meetings. The most particular one he was talking about would be Tuesday, June 18th, 2019. On it, you get the exacts of what was and was not recommended by the finance committee, and all those recommendations. This particular scenario were unanimous with the three people present, Brian, Art, and Rubino. I would also like to echo this concern when it comes to this deficit being the most important thing facing the city of Dunsmere right now. Absolutely every decision we make right now needs to be considered in light of the impact it's going to have upon our financial situation right now in the general plan. Whether that's ways of raising revenue, whether that's ways of tightening the belt wherever possible. So I just want to say that in principle, I would agree with that and appreciate this concern. But for the accuracy of some of those statements, I would refer everyone to the official minutes, which you can find at City Call.
Thank you. Council member Geisler?
Okay. I was at the LEED conference too, and I also, I sit on the board of directors for Siskiess, Shasta, Modoc, and Lassie County. And I put my name in the hat to reference again and one more time. So we're both young, looking forward to working with you there. And we also at the conference, we developed a rural cities group, and we've been given a year to come up with some ideas. And pretty much what I got out of it is, we want a piece of the pie. All the big cities, check it out, 50,000 people is what it takes to be a big city. If you're below 50,000 people, then you're a rural city. So you had a lot of these big cities that we all think are big cities, but they're still rural cities. So when they're talking, well, we got, you know, 39,700 people, we got 27,000, we got 40,000. They ask me, "Well, we got 16." They're like, "1,000?" Uh huh. I'm like, "About 1,600." So we all are going to be entitled for that same piece of pie that the big cities are going to have a shot at. So for us, it's a big deal. It's new doors, and it's going to be good for everybody. So nothing's in writing it, but it's a chance, and it's a wish. We started something all because of Kathy Mortar and Jan Arvar, fucko. They went to 16 different locations in every county and every, it was pretty cool. So it was just art being in a room, and you're seeing everybody's like, "You know what? We all represent." And I thought that was kind of cool. I have a couple of things real quick. I would like to see impact staff reports back in the agendas. It had a physical impact and then staff recommendation. You know, so that was always good. Mike Rodriguez, thank you. And again, Saturday, the full thing, 5 is, the reception starts, and then 6 o'clock is dinner. Please come. Let's save our... Let's save our pool. We kind of last minute last year, kind of don't want to do that again. There's going to be a Christmas parade, I think it was the 14th. It's the second Saturday. Be a Christmas thing downtown, Santa Claus, kids parade.
Is that December or November?
December.
Okay.
Something, okay, I have a couple of things, too. One, on November 13th, I discussed with the mayor, I will be having a couple of excused absent meetings. I'm having ankle surgery, so I'll be down for a count for a minute. And then, I would like maybe if we could talk about at a later date a discussion on creating a tax that would support law enforcement and code enforcement. That way, the money won't come out of general funds. And I think if the citizens saw that, that'd be something more that they'd be apt to look for. And then, okay, Sam, welcome. Thank you for stepping up. It's an honor to have you here. And then, I have a couple announcements here. There's a couple of job opportunities here in Dunsmere right now, and they're pretty good paying jobs. One, they got seasonal jobs at the post office. Go to the post office, check it out. It's 17 bucks an hour, 17 something. And the other job, there's the census is coming up. Every four years, they do the census.
10.
Yeah, every 10. What is coming up? I'm going to tell you something, it's answering a couple of questions. And what was told to me, and the reason why I'm promoting this, what was told to me is the ladies at Castle Rock, Donner, Castillo, they didn't want to take it. They did not answer the question. And what did they do? They denied their children's school for giving them the Prop 1 money. They asked the questions so they know what's up. What do you need? Where are you going to get money? Where are you going to get some support? It's not like you got one, so you're going to jail. It ain't like that. These are diverse questions, and they're asking. And they, all the big people are smart. They put all the government figure on it. You guys need this, or you guys need that. So, they're asking people to be census takers. It pays $15 for your training, and it pays 16 something to 18 something an hour plus mileage. You can work when you want. I have all the information here. It's at the Resource Center. It's at the Chamber Commerce. It's at the library, where you can get ahold of any of your rotarians. We have the information. These are good jobs. They pay weekly. Christmas is coming. And one more thing, please join me as we congratulate our mayor. She just got married.
Yay.
Actually, the mayor, I could have mentioned what he just said. I don't think people realize this, but at the beginning of the summer, everyone up here was a bachelor or bachelorette. And now, the three middle ones have gone off and got married over the summer.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you, because I really like them essentially. So, Sam's my brother-in-law now, so, there's that.
Right on.
But, dear, please have a comment.
If you think you're starting a landslide, hold your head up. I have, I agree with the vice mayor. It has been a while since we met. So, I have three items. One relates to the memorial that was held at Pops for one of our citizens that passed away, Bruce Petty. And Bruce, well-known to some of us that have been in the community for a while. I don't think he would object to be called a steam nut, a railroad freak, certainly a historian for the city of Dunsmere. But as Ron McLeod was delivering his comments at the memorial, one of the things I did not know is that Bruce Petty was one of the founding members of a group known as Hudmuck. And that was the original group that was designated to develop and oversee the creation of Dunsmere's historic district and to make sure the historic district stayed vital and alive. And so, in Bruce's memory and everything that Ron's tried to do, when we get to future agenda items, it's simply my opinion that at this point, there is no actable preside of our historic district. There is some sort of weak mandate for two members of our planning commission to oversee and protect the historic district. I don't know that those members have even been designated. And if they have, they have no real function. So, I hope as we move forward into the planning for the future of the community, we get back to protecting our historic district. The second is, I think all four members of the council plus Todd went to the Lola Gathering up in Weed. It was extremely valuable. It probably was not as valuable as the League of California Cities, but this is a chance to hear report outs from every city in Siskiyou County as to what's happening. And of obvious interest to me was the report from the mayor of the city of Weed about the effectiveness of their empty building ordinance. The empty building ordinance has been on the books for some time in Weed, but they've just decided to dust it off and use it to deal with some of the empty building problems they have in the city. It was of interest to the members of the council in Dunsmere. It was of interest to the members of the council in Etna. There are two features of the empty building ordinance. One is, the city is empowered to inspect empty buildings. The other is, whoever owns that empty building has 30 days to correct any deficiencies. And what Mayor Palfini said and what Bob Hall echoed is, this is an extremely fruitful initiative. And if Todd thinks that the city of Dunsmere needs to enact this ordinance to deal with our empty building problem, I'll be the first to sponsor it.
Yes, I'll second it. I'd third it.
The third item, for those that think going to the League of California Cities meetings are a junket, I disagree. And we all, the citizens of Dunsmere, pay for us to have membership of the League of California Cities. We get this magazine every month, Western City. And I understand, I'm the only lawyer on the council, but I certainly commend to you, read the article that starts on page 22, Hot Topics in California Municipal Finance. Mario, you should read it as well, because cited in the article is Leslie Wilde versus the city of Dunsmere, and smart things you can do to wager your way through the Prop 218 process if you need to raise your rates for utility services. It's well-written, it's instructive, and we need to get smarter in this regard as we go forward. And that is all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things that I've been working on for probably about the last month. So, I've just been helping the city manager navigate a couple of different things going on behind the scenes with building permits, planning stuff, just kind of helping where I can to get him some California contacts with those things. But as far as, you know, making some progress, I did attend a couple of workshops on grants that are being offered by Caltrans right now for non-motorized trail development, as well as a couple of different grant conference, not conferences, but grant workshops with the Department of Conservation on trail work as well, since that's something we've been focusing on, pedestrian calls, talking about moss spray. They've had a lot of funding that's coming out of those two agencies to fund more active transportation means. And so, those who are familiar, active transportation is basically walking, biking, doing anything very physical. They have some of those weird elliptical bikes and whatnot now. So, basically, it's traveling without a motor, using it as a way of exercising and getting around. So, there's a couple of grants that are coming up here that are no match grants, which would be really great for us to kind of partake in, since any money is good money, and not having to pay a match is great. So, hopefully, we'll be able to get some competitive bids for some of those grant dollars in the future to do some improvements on sidewalks, improvements on some of our trail network, as well as a couple of different open space opportunities. Actually, that's all I have today. Oh, I was just going to say, Councilmember Deutsch, if you need any help with your April event. I know Councilmember Hark has been asking for kind of a planning and visioning item to be placed on the city council agenda, but I think partnering that with your event that you want to have in April to do the visioning stuff might be a good opportunity to kind of ask those questions and put together a really good product. So, if you need...
You bet my thinking.
That'd be really great. So, thank you. Other than that, I have no other items on comments. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Because I know we've been gone here and then...
Yeah, we have done...
Well...
Any else?
No. I want to address the underperformance of the Public Works Committee. And for whatever we agreed to do as a council, we have very few functioning committees. And one of those is the Public Works Committee. So, I know for any number of reasons, including the fact that Julie reported that having advertised in the paper for public members, we receive no responses whatsoever. But I do think we need to have an organizational meeting of the city manager, Councilmember Keisler, and myself to at least start to map out any number of issues that will feed into this planning and visioning process. And I'm simply at your service whenever you guys are ready.
All right, thank you. Any other committees? All right, seeing none, we'll move into item number seven, which is approval of the minutes for September 19th, 2019.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes September 19th, 2019.
All right, there's a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Is there a second?
So?
There's a second. Was that Councilmember Ryan's second? Is there any discussion on the motion at hand, Councilmember Hark?
Well, just one question. Having read the minutes and compliments to the minute taken, these are extremely good minutes, and I know it's not easy. We have in, on page five of our agenda, page two of the minutes. The census at our last meeting was to add the grade-three salary for our wastewater treatment operator to the October 1 agenda with the notion the salary range we agreed to was problematic. Has that been solved, or what is the status on hiring for that position? Because to me, it's critical.
The posting's been out, and we haven't received any responses. Now, we upped from where we originally were planning to post that position, but it's, in comparison to the market, it's still low. So, we need to find somebody that's willing to take that salary because they want to be here.
But do we need council action to actually get an incumbent, or...
No, it's posted. We are, that was already passed by council.
So, I noticed, I saw the ad, very nice ad. It doesn't have a salary range. So, what does that mean?
As far as it's just not mentioning the salary in the ad? It shouldn't be?
It should, yeah, I don't know what you're...
Well, no, I take that back. This is a full-time position with a salary to be negotiated between 65,000 and 85,000, depending on experience, dah 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 dah, with the benefits added. All I'm saying is, this will be a collective failure if we can't fill this position.
Absolutely. It's, the salary, to my opinion, is low, but again, we're dealing with budget. And so, we need to fill it. We have to.
Does that take council action or not?
I think let's let the city manager see if anyone else takes it up in the timeframe that we have it open. And if it comes to the point that we didn't get anybody, he'll bring it back to us for discussion on possibly either raising that salary or other creative means to get someone here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion at hand, which is to approve the minutes as submitted? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes from September 19th, 2019 as presented, please say to the public, "Aye."
Aye.
Oppose, absention, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, consent agenda tonight. We did, just to reiterate again, that we moved item 8B, which is approval of the 50-50 grant with the Department of Forestry and Dunsmere Fire Department. We have moved that to the new business section to be ordered. And then, we also moved item 8B, approval of a resolution to Siskiyou County clerks calling an election and requesting consolidation with the March 3rd, 2020 county election. That has also been moved to new business.
I make a motion to consent agenda as amended.
All right. So, there's a motion to approve consent agenda items 8A, which is check register for September 27th through October 18th, 2019. 8C, reacross Siskiyou proclamation. And 8D, road closure for Christmas candles in the canyon. Is there a second?
I second.
There's a second by Councilmember Deutsch. Any discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving consent agenda items 8A, C, and D, please say to the public, "Aye."
Aye.
Oppose, absention, motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move on to item number nine, which is public hearing. We did not host a public hearing for the first reading of the hazardous vegetation ordinance that our last week, so we're hosting the public hearing now. So, we will move into that public hearing with staff support.
Well, we read the ordinance last time, but thought we were just going to go beyond that.
Yeah, okay. We do have, yeah, we do have to, so the way ordinance in SIS go is you have to have at least one public hearing typically done on the first reading, but we did not do that. So, we'll be doing the public hearing now. I don't know, John, can you correct me if I'm wrong? Can we approve a second reading of the public hearings today?
Well, unless it's a zoning ordinance, you don't need a public hearing in the first place.
Okay. I don't think we did put it as...
So, yes, I mean, but certainly, you can have, if there's public comment on the issue, you can certainly have it. If it's been, the first reading has been made, you can hear what you want. If you want to have a second reading, go ahead.
We've actually had to, well, we did a public reading already. Tried to get a deal of public input, and then came back down already, so.
Okay. Well, this is for, this item is for the hazardous vegetation, proposed hazardous vegetation ordinance and a second reading of that. And that starts on page 28 of our agenda packets ordinance number 564. Any questions on that from council before I open the public hearing?
Well, I did get excellent minutes from the last meeting. Ten old business, we have a public hearing on the first reading. It's on page two of the minutes. We have public comment.
Okay. So, again, we were just trying to cover our bases and make sure we weren't doing anything wrong when we were the round act, so. All right, seeing no questions, I'll open up the public hearing at 6:49 p.m. Anyone who'd like to make a comment on the hazardous vegetation ordinance, please feel free to do so. You have three minutes. And we would appreciate your name.
My name is Rick Chen. Mayor and council members, I would just ask if you might consider two things. One, that in order to have an incentive for taxpayers to clean the properties of green waste and hazardous material, that we expand the number of times per year that the city might pick up green waste for free for the taxpayers. And also, number two, human nature being that it is, it's quite possible that we'd see the proliferation of the use of glyphosate such as Roundup. And I would urge the council to maybe even ban outright weed killers that have that carcinogen in it. Thank you for your consideration.
Great, thank you. Is there any public comment tonight on the hazardous vegetation ordinance? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 6:50. I will move into council discussion. I know that we've talked about the green waste as a topic item for the Dunsmere negotiation for their contract, so that's something that's on the table for discussion and offering.
Sure, who will be speaking?
Do you want to take it?
May I?
Sure. So, and then as far as glyphosate, we have not discussed that as an item yet. So is there any council discussion on that item? Or it would not necessarily go into this ordinance?
I'd be happy to discuss the chemical control within our jurisdiction and see where that would fit. I think that would be wise to do.
Okay. Councilmember Art?
Well, under our committee system, which council committee will oversee the implementation of this ordinance?
So this would be implemented by staff. So it'll read in the ordinance, it gives, it basically outlines the fire chief's ability to go do inspections of properties, respond, do letters. And I know that we do still have the code enforcement officer position open for those who are applying for that. So it gives them some ability to enforce this type of ordinance as well. As far as, are you discussing the green waste option?
Yes, well, yes, in part. I thought the community gathering at the community building that our citizen committee put together with the sheriff, with Caltrans, with Calfire, with the Office of Emergency Service, I thought it was beautifully organized and very instructive. If we're going to be successful, then I certainly agree with Citizen Chen. Our green waste program, if we work backwards, we once had a budgeted function for tree trimming and related vegetation management. And it was in the solid waste management budget. The city attorney and the prior city manager said it can't be in there. It needs to be in the general fund. As far as I know, neither the staff nor the committee has looked at on a forward-looking basis, what is the city going to do to support everything from basic tree trimming for safety to vegetation management to become fire safety? How much are we going to spend? How much is going to be public work? What grants are we going to go after? If you want to lay that on staff, I suppose we can. But it seems like it needs more of a community discussion than that. And now, we hope we're through the fire season for 2019. We have months of rain and snow to figure this out before spring next year. But for the budget deficit that we all worry about, for budgeting going forward and who's going to do what, I think either we charge our disaster recovery committee with this, or we as a city council need to lead the way to how we're going to make this successful. And I do, you know, I'm one of the people that reads the newspaper, but Calfire has ranked Dunsmere, Etna, Fort Jones, Mapchasta, Weed, and Wyreti into very high fire hazard severity zones. And the article says more than 90% of Dunsmere is in this category, with parts of other communities at very high risk. So I think just to leave it to staff or even just to our citizen committee, we need to do more.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the second reading of the hazardous vegetation ordinance? Is there a motion to approve the second reading? And is it a motion to approve the second reading and ratify the ordinance number by title only?
I'm going to approve the second reading and ratify by number only.
Do you want to write the title? On page 28, is that what this is? Yeah, page 28, at the top.
On page, here we go. I got it. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Dunsmere amending creating chapter 8.05, hazardous vegetation and combustible material abatement of the Dunsmere Municipal Code. Readings number 564.
By title, by title only. First to say by title only.
By, by, by title only. By title only.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, there's a motion to approve and a second. There's a discussion on the motion at hand. Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 564, by title only, please signify to say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, absention, motion carries. Thank you very much.
That's one of the more difficult combinations there.
All right.
And so we're clear, this ordinance takes effect when?
Thirty days.
Thirty days after. So that's how much time we have to start planning.
All right. So move on to item number 10, which is old business, which is receive and discuss suggested projects for SB2 planning grant. We'll go here today.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to you all again. Thank you all for the folks that showed up for the housing workshop that we had back on September 24th. So I'm really, really here to give you this information today. It's, basically, I'm here to give it to you so that you can tell me whether I got it wrong. So we have a list of recommendations for the SB2 planning grant. I'm not looking for any action on the part of the council tonight other than to say, you know, whether you have any concerns with the recommendations that are made. So over the last month, I've looked at...
Just one quick thing for councilmembers. I'm on page 49 of your packets. It's kind of buried in there. But that's just page 49.
So over the past month, I've been looking for, looking at the city's planning documents for constraints to housing production, as well as trying to get an idea of housing needs also within the planning documents and from the workshop that we had. I gotta tell you, this is the fifth one that I'm working on. Dunsmere's is by far the most challenging. Since I was a planner, you all have done some crazy stuff to the code that I had not expected to find, such as allowing a lot of things by right. So what I'm doing for a lot of communities, I will just tell you, is housing elements. That's the big thing for this planning grant. This is a $160,000 planning grant. I'm recommending we go after the full thing. One of my big concerns for all cities, all small cities in particular, is that the housing element is an unfunded government mandate that you all, typically, you're responsible for now every eight years. I watched these, the price of housing elements escalate considerably since I've been doing planning in Siskiyou County in the last 15 years. I think it's gone from about $15,000 to $20,000. The next one was estimated at about $40,000. Last week, the governor signed a bunch of new legislation. It's now, you're now looking at about a $55,000 to $60,000 housing element every eight years. I don't have a plan for the next, for eight years from now. But for this next one, I am definitely recommending that you fund your housing element update with this planning grant. Now, I will tell you, housing elements are not something that the state's just jumping all over themselves to fund. The purpose of this money really is to break the logjam for housing development. Now, that being said, I know how to get your housing element funded through the state. And, but typically, that requires pairing it with one of the state's priority policy areas, of which is usually pretty easy because there's a lot of low-hanging fruit. You know, a lot of people don't update their codes frequently to allow multifamily by right to have, you know, very high densities. You know, Dunsmere allows 40 units to the acre in the high-density residential. Most of our community is already zoned for high-density residential or commercial use that allows high-density residential uses, or it's zoned R3, R4. We have, we are a very permissive code relative to, and I'll tell you, so it's been 40 since I've been here in Dunsmere. But we have a very permissive code as far as what you can do for multifamily housing in the city. And yet, we still have an issue with housing development that's largely just based on the constraints, the reality that we're in a river canyon, steep forested walls, that we have a flood zone, a floodway that flows right through the middle of the community, that we have portions of the community, a very large portion of the community that is, has no access. I'm talking about everything north of the Siskiyou Ave interchange. So it is tricky. I think that, you know, I will tell you that I have had this, I know we can get all of this stuff funded, which is recommendation for housing elements to be funded, zoning amendments based on the, not really anything that I saw in your plan with the exception of one, the zoning code, with the exception of one thing. So what I'm recommending for zoning amendments? Incorporating accessory dwelling unit ordinance consistent with state law. As you all know, the, we are now required to allow accessory dwelling units with very little, very few limitations relative to our second dwelling unit ordinance. As well as last week, the, in this, all the bill that the governor signed, there was several changes to accessory dwelling units.
Could you just grab more in depth what an accessory dwelling unit is? Because most people don't know what an ABU is.
An accessory, an accessory dwelling unit is simply an additional dwelling that you can have on your property now by right. So within the single-family residential zoning district, though, you know, we used to be able, you can, in the past, you could have a single-family dwelling. And then we changed, the state changed the law to allow granny units. And then it was determined that you couldn't be age-biased with those housing, and it went to second dwelling units. What the state has done is they have, there were a number of regulations that were put, or thresholds that were put in for second dwelling units. The state has pulled some of those regulations back to encourage housing production. Accessory dwelling units can even be in a converted garage. It has to be a, it has to be building code, has to be a permanent housing type, sorry.
Empire.
Empire code, thank you. But it is, it is really done largely to encourage housing development in urban areas. This is an urban area, but they're looking, I'm sure, for much larger cities than we were for this. So that is one thing that, we just want to make sure that we've got accessory dwelling unit ordinance on the books so that there's understanding for staff when they go to understand what they can and cannot allow inside city units. And I also recommend that we pair this with some information regarding accessory dwellings that we get out to the community so that we can't miss anything built. But last week, one of the bills that was signed by the governor is SB13, which establishes fees for accessory dwelling units. So now, any accessory dwelling units under 750 square feet, we can't charge anything for. No connection fees, no fees. I'm not sure about building, do you, did you find anything about building permits?
You can still charge for development fees that are not associated, like, so basically, you're still charging the school fees, you charge them a couple of different services, development fees. We can do that.
Okay, I believe they eliminated the requirement for school development impact fees for accessory dwellings.
Okay, I have to double check that, yeah. It's, it's, they basically are increasing the 2020 building code to be done zero, but then they're going backwards with ABU and pretty much telling you that you can kind of do whatever you want.
They are.
So it's kind of really interesting to navigate.
And there are several changes that just went into effect last week. So this is all new to all of us. Doctor, reasonable combination procedures, that's one thing for individuals with physical disabilities, weather, other disabilities. So maybe they need reduced setbacks on the side yard so they can get a ramp built so they can get up onto the property. That's something that we have a program in our housing element that says that we're going to adopt this. I'm recommending we absolutely go forward with that. One of the things we discussed at the workshop was allowing non-conforming residential structures that are damaged or destroyed by fire to be rebuilt, regardless of their nonconforming status. That is one thing I'm also recommending that we do to ensure that if a property owner loses their home in their property zone, say Central Commercial, like a lot of Dunsmere have here, and we're only allowing residential uses on the second floor and above, makes all that residential use on the ground floor nonconforming. But it's legal nonconforming. We just want to make sure that there's no issues associated with that. We want people to understand that they can rebuild absolutely if anything happens to their home. Nothing worse than getting kicked in the teeth after you lose your house. So, and then also, another issue that we discussed at the workshop is to allow for development of substandard lots regardless of ownership of adjacent lands. I know that's currently on our books. When I was planning in the past, we had a gentleman who wanted to develop a substandard parcel. He could not do so because he owned the adjacent lot. And was not interested in doing a boundary line, just because it was tied up in family trust, all, both parcels. So those are the zoning code changes. Otherwise, the one other thing that I am recommending, aside from CEQA for all of this, is objective design guidelines. And I will tell you right now, the objective design guidelines are, the state's funding so that you can go in and you know that you can build your property without any hindrance from the city or the county. In this case, we don't have a law that prohibits people from being able to develop their properties any way they want. But this is really being done as a priority policy area to ensure that we have something that we can couple our housing element update with. Now, that may be something that changes as I develop the application. That's one thing I want everyone to understand. These are the recommendations. They may be modified slightly when I come back to you next month with the application. So, and the objective design standards that the state is funding for the priority policy area is really because of SB35, which is a streamlining for approval of affordable housing. So in order to, you know, address people's concerns about what things may look like, because one of the things that you can do with SB35 when you're looking at streamlined affordable housing, you really can't have public hearings on the planet. You know, if you allowed, if you required this current, you couldn't. And so they allowed, the state's funding objective design guidelines basically so that you can get out of the way of streamlined approvals. Well, streamlined approvals don't have any effect in areas where you are zoned, where you have very high fire hazard severity zone, which applies to us, as you just heard. So it's one of those things where we may not need objective design standards as part of this process. And I was advised that it may be more than we can afford to complete with $160,000. So that being said, I am confident that we could actually, it's not that terribly difficult to come up with objective design standards. I think that it becomes more of an issue of whether or not the council wants them. So I am going to look at that a little more closely. Follow-up with the city manager about this issue. But that is the only thing that I will tell you may be changing with regard to the recommendations, are the objective design standards. If we don't need it, and it's going to put a, a little bit, make the budget a little bit tighter, and we can get everything else accomplished with the grant, then I'm going to probably recommend that we do that.
Rico, do you want to add a consideration of parcels that we may want to target for annexation at some point in the future? I know they're very small.
So annexation is not one of the issues that we can address with SB2. But I will tell you, in looking at, you know, looking at the vacant land inventory in the housing element, I've probably looked at every parcel that is vacant in this city at this point. With the exception of stuff that I can't access because it's east of the freeway and there is no access, although I am interested at least walking out there. In doing so, the nice thing is that I think I probably have a better idea than ever before about what lands we should likely look at for annexing to allow further housing production. That is, again, not associated with the SB2 planning grant, but it's something I'm certainly happy to discuss with anyone on the council and the city staff at any time. I think that we have some parcels where we can actually encourage housing development because right now, we really don't have many. In fact, in your council memo, there are some properties that I've identified as properties to focus on for development. And I will tell you, it's a total of, one being already developed, which is a house of glass with an acre and a half. Another one that's three-quarters of an acre. So that, of the vacant lands that I have on here, we have just about one acre of vacant land. Just to put things in perspective.
Go ahead, Councilmember Deutsch.
Two things. First of all, you said that we're updating our housing elements. Is that right?
Correct, that's my recommendation, yes.
And how often does it have to be done?
Every eight years.
Okay, because like four years ago, we updated it, right? So we're just taking advantage of coming up on it. It's a good time to do it then, right?
It's required, so it used to be a four years... It's required, so it used to be a four years, I'm sorry, SBA five-year cycle.
Okay.
And then it was changed to an eight-year cycle to bring, because of changes that were done for the original transportation plan. They are now updating the original transportation plan a little more frequently, which allows us to update our Housing Elements less frequently. And it's something that I've been interested in trying to get the, all of us on the eight-year cycle for a long period of time, try to save some money. And at the time, I thought I was saving folks $15,000 to $20,000. I didn't understand that it was actually now looking at $55,000 to $60,000.
So the other question I have is, you mentioned things like CEQA and et cetera. Are those all things that you think can be done with the 160, including the Housing Element?
Yes, I don't, I don't think we have anything, we're not doing anything that is, well, we're not, we're not doing anything that's going to trigger the I R.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Councilmember, are there any questions?
Most of it was answered, thank you.
Any concerns with any recommendations?
Some people like letter grades, some people hate them, but I thought the memo was excellent. You tracked exactly what went on in the workshop, so you gave an A+ for me.
Thank you.
I was following the narrative on vacant and underutilized parcels, but the last bullet is 306 acres of single-family residential.
Yes. That is largely, the single-family residential that we have available is either across the river from the old, before Prospect Ave washed out, we have some single-family residential over there. We have some single-family residential up by the airport, a lot that is to the east of the freeway, inaccessible area. Some of this land that is up by the airport is within the flight path of the airport and is not to be developed anyway. And then there is some land up above the, I believe it's called the Mountain Estates subdivision, which is probably, I believe, 40 acres up there. But knowing what that property looks like, it is largely, so the slopes, I believe, are about 10 to 15% up there. There, the properties have been developed in that area on sort of, I'll call them like, fingers between drainages. And the drainages get a little more complicated up in that vacant land. We have more drainages and we have some wetland features up there as well. So when you actually look at how much land is available, even within that we could develop with single-family dwellings, it's pretty limited. I think that we could probably realistically develop another, and I'm sure our Housing Elements has something very different, but I would estimate we could probably develop another 40 single-family dwellings in this community.
And so when you get to the last part, listed properties that the city should concentrate its efforts on, that's why those areas didn't make the cut?
No, frankly, the reason that...
And I ask you, what about the airport?
Yeah, so the airport didn't make the cut because of the access issue. So I'll tell you one that, I guess I'm pleased to have worked on the city's general plan because by golly, it had been a while since I'd written it, as the mayor had indicated. To me, at one point, it's pretty well-written. In fact, the discussion on hillside development is really good and access issues and when it is time to consider annexation. So there is a very robust discussion of issues associated with development of the airport in the general plan. And I know that we looked at this issue quite a bit when we worked on the general plan back in 2005, 2006. We are, it's really, it's an issue of access and it's an issue of just cost for development. You know, I mean, the general plan says it's likely when you require an additional wastewater treatment plant up there. Just with that in perspective, or at the very least, facilitated...
Process.
Sorry.
Process.
Yes, yes, it's going to be an expensive endeavor to develop up there. That being so, one of the things you talked about was annexation. The airport property doesn't exist. It really, it's a long linear strip that's rather constrained by the flight path and airport noise. Now, you start looking to just to the east of the airport, there's some lovely land that I would love to annex if Roseburg was ever amenable to it. I think we could put in, there's a couple hundred acres up there that we could have significant growth for a long period of time. The issue with that, of course, is connectivity with the rest of the community, sort of, you know, a separate North Dunsborough, if you will, which changes the feeling of our small-town community.
Is that acreage or all of the ownership?
It is, all the land that I am looking at is private.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. You mentioned single-family housing a lot. Looking at the regional housing needs assessment, do you think Dunsborough's going to be able to even really put a dent into their low-income and affordable numbers of single-family housing?
No, not with, not with single-family housing, no, absolutely not. That's one of the reasons that single-family is largely excluded from here. You know, these properties are all properties that I think are most appropriate for multifamily development, most bang for the buck.
And then I don't think that our general planners also have it in there, but are you leaning towards doing like, unit minimums for lots to encourage people not to do single-family on the R3 or R4?
I am not.
Okay.
That is something we can obviously discuss, but no, I'm not, I'm not, so when I worked on the Housing Element in 2000...
Seven?
Yeah, maybe. I don't recall when exactly.
Seventy, it's one of those.
Yeah, a while ago. I know there's a parcel that was, let me try to also stay with you on this. The, so the, I looked at this property a while ago and it's zoned R2, and I looked at whether or not we could increase the zoning to meet our arena numbers, our original housing needs allocation numbers, per those of you that are not HCB geeks like the mayor and I. So we could not do that because what HCB was requiring was that, so the property's zoned R2, which allows up to 10 units to the acre, and, but it allows you to have one unit, just as R3 does, and R3, R2, R4, you can have one up to the max. We looked at rezoning a piece of property to meet our original housing needs allocation, and the state was going to require, this is where lovely planning from Sacramento comes from, they were telling the property that, or they were telling the city that it would have to be, I believe, no less than 12 units to the acre on that property, and that prevented that property from being rezoned. If it had been rezoned and we were allowed to just keep it at 1 to, 1 to 40, we would have been good for arena numbers for a very long time. It wouldn't have addressed our housing necessarily. But, so the gentleman that owned the property wanted no part of that. He didn't want to be told that he can build a single-family dwelling on his property that he purchased the property for. And I got to tell you, given that we are over-zoned in this community and what vacant land we have, where it does allow single-family dwellings, I'm quite sure that most people did not buy their parcels to put in multifamily housing, and I certainly don't want to get into a lawsuit with anybody over potential government taking of their property rights.
Okay. I'm good for questions. We'll now open this up for public comment if anyone would like to make a comment on the SB 2 planning grant and proposed projects that we're looking at. In three minutes.
Hello, people. I'm Devin Warner, I'm a member of the Planning Commission. So glad to see you and so glad that you're joining us. I want to reiterate my concerns about housing in general in Dunsborough. I think we should do everything we can to develop housing, obviously, but I am going to be seeking some leadership from the rest of this community on how we can limit Airbnb because I think that's going to become even more important because of what this gentleman just said about what our availability is for developing new properties. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and make a comment on the proposed SB 2 planning grant activities? Seeing none, we'll move back to council. Councilmember Deutsch.
I would like to follow up on that. One of the sessions that I made sure I went to at the League of California Cities was dealing with short-term rentals. Unfortunately, the large cities that are dealing with it aren't having much money, having much luck even with the money they have, being able to sculpt out ways of dealing with it in terms of ordinance. They basically pushed it onto the idea that what we need to do is make sure we do our research to get as much as we can out of the TOP taxes that we should be getting, any of the building fees, et cetera. So unfortunately for the small cities, it's kind of difficult to do, but I'm keeping an eye on it because I understand it really has changed in the nature of our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this item, councilmember Arp?
Well, just two things. One is Commissioner Warner sort of raises one question, and that is, when and how does the Dunsborough Planning Commission get involved in this process? They are delegated planners. And the second is, hardly a day goes by where I don't hear somebody venting about the house of glass, an abandoned building with plywood on windows. So I do hope, the first workshop we had was a little circle of chairs. How many members were there? One?
Two.
Two?
Two or three.
If we, if we plan on a second public workshop, we advertise and highlight that we're talking about the House of Glass, the Travelers Hotel, the Dunsborough Hotel, the Acorn Inn, people will come, people will care. So I hope we, I would try to engage the community going forward.
I would even extend it to owners, we invite them to hear what people in the community think about their houses and their properties. And some, in the case of the travelers, are eager to develop and the process of developing the community input would be important at this beginning stage.
And on a planning basis, I'm sorry, on a planning basis, I think the single-family residence as we knew it is an artifact of the past. We're going to go in denser, multifamily, smaller units. So, yeah, we're not going to have very many subdivisions in Dunsborough, but that's okay if we look to the future.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to point out that as far as the House of Glass, it's down the street from where I live, I've got a regular eye on it. And the problem that we've been experiencing with that is, is that on one hand, because the price is so low to purchase it, then people say, oh, I could purchase that and I've got this great idea, and then they end up purchasing it and then they end up not being able to follow through on their idea. So that's happened at least once, and I think that it's a challenge going forward to find somebody who looks at the low price and says, with a really good bit of extra money, I can make a good deal there. Because we could put in, I believe, not only the units that are the old motel into units there, but also I think there's place for an apartment building that could be facing Mount Shasta and maybe bring in more of the middle-class type residential as well. So I'm looking forward to that, but it's a challenge.
So is there any other discussion on the points that Rico has made? Is it okay if he can move forward with the application for SB 2 with what we have? And yeah, just to reiterate, one of the things with SB 2 is the state's being very active about what is being submitted, so it might get changed a little bit, but I think overall, the items that are out there are really important for the community. So is there...
He has my questions.
Would you, is the motion to move forward what you'd like, or just general?
I'm good. No, no, actually, your comments are right.
Pretty sure unanimously you can either go ahead, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So move on from item number 10A to new business. I want to start the discussion really quick on where we would like to place the consent agenda items. And I know councilmember Brian, you had requested one of them to go first. I would like to appeal and just say that I'd like to keep A and B at the front of new business just because those are concerning individuals and the audience that may not want to stay for the entire new business. We have an appointment to the district and handle a possible contract.
My only request, we can do B and C first, but I think A should go after item E or item B moved.
Okay. So you'd like A to go lower?
Than E, so hopefully we do that.
Okay.
As well as consent agenda B. In other words, all the ones that involve financial decisions should go after B.
Okay. So there's a request to move the parking director appointment first and then move the employee risk management authority second. Is that what you're saying?
Keep A, A?
We are, we're going to move A down to C. So we're going to bring items B and C up first. Is that okay?
Well, the training here, the tax on March 3rd needs to go before all items regarding financial decisions, including the contract for services, for planning services, and the grant for A.
Does the council need all of that or what?
I'm a real quiet girl.
Okay. So basically, we're going to put up the first for new business.
But not really.
Yeah. All right, so we'll move item 11B up first, which is the approval of Parks and Recreation District City Board appointment of Ellen McCarren. If you'd like to come up and just kind of give us an introduction of yourself, if you're here, I believe I heard someone say. Welcome. If you could just give us a little introduction and why you want to be on in the Parks and Recreation District, that'd be helpful.
I'm Ellen McCarren, and I work with the Dunsborough Botanical Gardens, so when they needed someone to fill a position, I thought with the botanical gardens and the park would be a good fit.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions from councilmembers for Ellen? All right, sounds good. All right, is there any public comment on the appointment of Ellen to the Parks and Recreation Board? Any public comment? Seeing none, we move into discussion. Is there any discussion on the appointment?
I agree, we appoint Ellen McCarren to the position on Park and Recreation.
All right. Motion by councilmember Deutsch, second by councilmember Kaisler. Any discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, all those in favor of appointing Ellen McCarren to the Parks and Recreation District Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstention, motion carries.
Welcome to the team.
I think you've won the award for the fastest item. All right, so it's been requested now to move to the consent agenda, item A, E, which is approval of the resolution to the Siskiast County Clerk calling an election and requesting consolidation of the March 3rd, 2020 county election. Take it away.
So at the last city council meeting, we talked about holding a special election, I guess my voice doesn't carry. So moving a TUT increase of 1% to the special election coming up, and what we found in the process of writing a resolution from our attorney, John Kenny, is that under proposition 218, that, that is illegal. And I don't know, John, if you want to go into a little of that.
If I may, under Prop 213...
213, 218.
Huh?
213 or 218?
218, pardon. You have general taxes and special taxes. General taxes are basically general fund taxes, you can use it for any purpose. Special taxes have to be used for designated purposes. General taxes can be approved by a majority vote. Special taxes take a two-thirds vote. General taxes have to be approved at a general election, or in our case, an election when there are city council members running. The exception being you can, under, if you have by unanimous, unanimous vote of the city council, you find that there's an emergency, you can pass a resolution declaring an emergency and put a general tax on other than a general election. I know the other rules with respect to initiatives and referendums, but we don't need to worry about that.
I thought that with the referendum, if we had, if we had submitted by signature, you'd only need a 50% majority for that.
Yeah, you go ahead. If you have...
How many signatures would we need for that? Do you know?
No, I don't. I think it's 10% of the last people that wrote, voted for the mayor's, of the governor's election. But the people have the right to a referendum and an initiative. And if, if there's a group of citizens that wanted to put a matter on the ballot, there'd be initiative, and they can put the matter on the ballot and, under recent Supreme Court decisions, the court has held that initiative, the Prop 218 didn't affect the initiative process, so you can have a general tax at a, at a special election and it's still... you can have a general tax at a special election, and it still only takes a majority.
Just to summarize, if we wanted to put this tax that we were talking about on the March 3rd ballot, we would either have to do so as an emergency?
Yes.
Or we would have to basically not put it on, but convince the general public to put it as an initiative?
Yes, but, yeah, I don't know if there's time for that. But for initiative, I haven't looked at that.
Okay. So...
But I understand, you know, it's, I digress. It's one thing to put it on the ballot. It's another thing to get it passed.
Yes.
And some thoughts you'd be getting, you know, I drafted, you have an ordinance there, and you have a resolution. And by the way, these, because this has become a problem, these documents have proved, the ordinance has been approved by the state, which the state has to do the election, has to do the collection, so on, to make sure that what we're approving, they would approve, and they're okay with it. And the county clerk, election clerk, has issues with respect to ballot measures. So this ballot measure has been approved by the county council. So these are okay. But I basically made them up. I don't know if you want a special tax or a general tax. I don't know how you want to word.
So that's going to be my clarification. We could still put it on the March 3rd, 2020, but we would have to revise this as a special tax instead of the general election.
Like, for example, special tax for law enforcement.
Correct.
Increase law enforcement. And so you put it on the ballot, and you pre-work as much as you can with the time that you have, but remember that we've got to get, you know...
But the city can't spend any money on it.
That's, I wanted to point that. We cannot, we cannot campaign for making it put on the ballot.
The city would, a private resident.
Yes.
We can, under strict guidelines, my understanding.
Well, okay. Here's a strict guideline to one, we can provide information.
Yes.
Okay. But we can't urge one side or the other. That's a very, very thin line.
And if we go with the special, that means we have to have two-thirds, which makes it even more challenging to kind of do it in a short term.
Well, you know, the best, you had a question with respect to initiative. I mean, in my view, you know, if a group of citizens came forward and said, this is what we want, and put it on the ballot, you'd be legged up on getting it passed. And you're going to need some organization or some group to sponsor this. Because you can't. I mean, you can't, you can spend your own personal time, but I'd be careful. You can't use any city resources, any city money, anything of that.
So I don't want to get into necessarily discussion before we go to public comment. I just wanted to ask questions to make sure everybody knows what's going on, and that it is not a very easy issue, or basically passing a tax is not as easy as...
You think, you know, we're not the only city to wrestle with this issue. And Mike Barver is going to go on, but you know, he made a number of runs trying to get a mega stat.
So again, just to reiterate, we can't necessarily run this as a general tax in the next, the March election, just unless we meet a couple of different special circumstances. We could still amend it and turn it into a special tax, and then clarify what that special tax would be going to. We could make that action tonight. Is there anything else that I'm not thinking of as far as what our options are moving forward?
Theoretically, it's still possible to get initiative, but it is frustrating since we've been receiving staff reports on this exact issue and our options since early June, that here we are a few days from the deadline, finally finding out that this might not be legal. Similarly, we requested, you know, a month ago that this would be developed. It's a little frustrating to find out that this thing we've been spending so much effort on in the last few months. We could have taken it in a direction and had time to perhaps develop an initiative.
You know, maybe I can understand that frustration, but I drafted this without really any input from the city council, because I don't know what the city council wants. And so, and I mean, I want a special tax, but what has to be determined is, you know, somebody has to give some special guidance on tactical measures to ensure that the matter gets passed. For example, when people put a general tax on the ballot, they frequently, so you can use a general tax for anything you want, and you can't say, you can say for instances, but that's, you've got to be careful with that. But what they will do is, in the ballot measure frequently, is say, we'll form a citizens committee, give this advice on this matter.
All that has to be done by October 31st to get...
I'm just talking, yeah.
Well, we could, we could move on forming something as part of this discussion when we get to the topic.
It's just, one thing I added is, at the last council meeting, we talked about at a half percent increase, a 1%, 1.5%, 2% what that would get us. And at 1% TUT, what we came up with is we could restore...
Just a second. I'm really tired to go.
Yeah, a Todd microphone. Thank you.
Do you mind if you could just buy one of those?
Yeah, love a lyric.
Some Britney Spears type lines. So, you know, what we looked at last time is with a 1% increase that could return sheriff patrols to the city to full time. That's what we choose. So that is an approach that we could take with minimal amounts of time. If, you know, if you declared that was an emergency, you run the risk of, you know, being...
Someone calling you out.
Right, exactly.
But if we did that, yeah. But we could amend it tonight to become a special tax to fund law enforcement, X, Y, Z.
Exactly. But taking it one step further down the road is, last time out, if we don't blow the general tax or special tax, this time around, we are going to be continuing the deficit spend, and so we're going to be moving in less area.
When you want to go to the election, what form is your decision? But I think I would advise that it be done in an orderly and well-thought-out manner. Because you can, if you go to a special election, of course, it costs you money, and you lose...
It's hard to come back from that.
Yes.
So just before we get into discussion, is there any other questions before I open this up for public comment? All right. We will now open this up for public comment. If you'd like to come up, you'll have three minutes on the matter. I know it's a little bit more of a complicated subject and the different options being discussed, but continue going.
Mario, you're doing 5512, Dunsmere Avenue. Mr. Art, good to see that you read the Legis Cities magazine. I'm proud. I hope you get the chance to read about preparation and the discussion on TUT taxes in that magazine. I do read it as well. Mr. Bryant, folks, you don't have to look anything up. Just come up here, page five, and then page six. You will see Mr. Bryant and his specific quotes. And Mr. Bryant points to a meeting where we discussed options to bring to council. Since there, the last meeting, which I wasn't able to attend, I told financial manager, I told the city manager, I had to...
Mario, I paused your time, but you're, when you're giving public comment, you're giving public comment to the council.
These are all on the tax.
Again, you're not giving public comment to the audience. You're giving public comment to us.
I will entertain you. So they were told of my disagreement with the tax. I have emailed Big Dave. I've emailed some of the council. And what I'm saying is, we're stoked pipe. We're not letting the information from the finance committee, county council. It was a decision made to go ahead and investigate and potentially recommend what taxes could be presented. But in subsequent meetings, there's a discussion, and there hasn't been a vote to do a 1, 2, or even a 0.5. All that being said aside, the basic thing is, there's a lot of information about this TUT tax. If we were to prevail on the election in March, according to the state tax, the TUT, they have the right for a preparatory amount of money. It's based on, just like the county clerk is, every district in the state that gets the same tax. So they figure out how much it costs to set up our 1% or 5% tax, whatever it is, and they charge us. Well, in March, in that period of time, there are very few elections, very few of these passed. We would be on the hook to pay the preparatory amount for the range of anywhere between $30,000 to $175,000. She said, or, yeah, she said they've never charged $175. The most it's been is $145. But as you can see, our tax dollars from that tax aren't going to show up in the first year or so. Now, we passed the TUT. There's lots of information. If we would have had a chance to discuss with the finance committee, I could have explained that not only are we paying a fee for the county clerk to handle the election, but that we pay, well, we pay a cent for every dollar that the state collects in sales tax and/or in TUT tax. And at the same time, we have to pay this preparatory where they set up and make the arrangements to start setting this money.
So Mario, you're at three minutes, but I will only give you an extra 30 if you'd like.
Greatly appreciated.
And then I will give everyone three minutes and 30 seconds for the remainder of this item, because it is an important item.
To round up this whole conversation, a tax in the city, when we are facing having to do a solid waste increase, we're looking at passing a tax that in less than two years, if spending continues the way it's been, we're going to have to pass another one. We have just passed water and sewer rates on the citizens. I want the city to be funded more than anyone. I want it to be funded the right way. Mr. Art, Mr. Bryant, we all agree on the finance committee, let's go to a five-year, but we need to do the work.
That's your time. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to give public comment on the proposed TUT tax measure for the March 3rd, 2020 election?
I just have a question.
Sure. You're good.
Okay. My question is, and I kind of understand from the last time that you guys met, my question is, isn't this a tax on the hotels?
This is the TUT, so it would be a sales tax.
The sales tax. And was that 1% or 1/2%? You guys haven't figured that out?
1%.
1%.
But everyone agreed on the 1%, which is a question in March or next November.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for clarification. Are there any other comments related to the possible tax measure on March 3rd, 2020 election? Seeing none, we will close public comment and move into discussion. Councilmember, I'm going to give Councilmember Bryant an opportunity to go first, since he is the chairman of the finance committee in this...
First, I'd like to respond to our public comment very briefly. Side note, my name's Brian, B-R-Y-A-N, there's no T. You can see it written right now. Secondly, I'd like to refer everyone to the June 18th minutes from the finance committee. It is true, there's a lot yet to be discussed and known, especially relative to when we put it on the ballot. But unanimously recommended by Rubino, Art, and myself, that we recommend increasing the city's transaction and general use tax rate in the amount of no less than 1%, sufficient to fund continued and upcoming law enforcement costs, animal control, a full-time code enforcement officer, continue our community promotions funding, establish a proactive grant writing program, and in addition to these, maintain a healthy level of savings in our city's general fund and reserves. So that's kind of the core of where this came from and what we're trying to do here. Questions of where we put it on the ballot, I think, are very important, especially relative to legal challenges that may arise. But that is something that our treasurer approved back in June. You may have different thoughts on it now, and he's more than welcome to have them. I'd like to hear that. I appreciate the share from him. Thank you.
Councilmember Deutsch.
I want to go back to what I was saying last time when we discussed this. I still feel that it is our best interest to wait till November, and I'm only more convinced of that after hearing this information. I just think that, and I believe that for a rare moment of unity here, I agree with Mr. Rubino, that we need to do this right, and we need to think it through, and we need to get the people behind us. And doing that in three months essentially is, I think, not going to be a success. And I don't want us to burn the money and get rid of it without any success. That's all.
Do you have that sentiment? So for, what I'm kind of thinking about is, would you have the same sentiment if we were to pair down that list and change this into a special tax for law enforcement and animal control special?
Well, I just know that they've tried special taxes before. They tried it for the library and for the pool, and they got the same amount that we got the second time, around 60%. So I think that the odds are against Dunsmere being able to come up to 66% to do that.
Even in like law enforcement, that everybody's been pretty on the same page about in animal control? I'm just thinking that if we were going to do this, I know that we need it. I think everyone on this...
I think everybody would jump on board for law enforcement and animal control. That I don't care when it is, I'm the vote on. I believe that that's what we need.
Again, the thing that Mario brings up is very compelling, and that is, I understand that when they do come up with a new tax, there's a certain amount of money. And if you have all kinds of other cities, because it's a regular election, you can spread that out. If it turns out that we are one of the only ones that are putting out a special tax in March, that means that all of the money that would be going into making those changes would fall on us, and we would end up with up to $100,000 that would be taken out of any taxes that we might receive until we paid $100,000 back.
City manager, you taught us, have you heard about what the cost would be to put one of these on the ballot and what that possibly could be? I don't think it'll be as high as $100,000. It can be...
See, I'm not talking about putting it on the ballot. I'm talking...
Put it afterwards.
Afterwards, yeah.
In terms of it being on the March ballot.
For, so basically, there's a cost to put it on the ballot, and then there's a cost on the back end with the board of equalization, which that's what VOE is, if anyone knows what that is. That's the tax people. So the back end for VOE, have we looked at a cost estimate for this one? I don't think it'll be $100,000. It will probably be fairly high, because it is special, but...
Well, all I know is the run-in would be $316,000 to $21,000.
Compared to what, November?
It would be $6,000. Three, $6,000.
Okay.
Three, right. Five, five, okay.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Art, you're also on the finance committee, and I know this is something that you've been working on with Councilmember Bryant. Your thoughts?
Comment number one is to apologize to everybody involved with the finance committee, because we spent the entire summer being advised by both the city manager, and I assume the city attorney, that we in fact had the ability to put this on the March 1 ballot. And now we find out tonight that we don't.
In fairness, as the interim city manager, I did talk, I talked about that a lot.
I have the memo from the prior city manager, and we operated all through the summer. And so the action that Councilmember Bryant, the chair of the finance committee, reported, was exactly right. That's what we decided to do. I'm looking at Mario's letter. Help Dunsmere say no. And I can't make sense out of that, because if we were to operate on a balanced budget for fiscal year 1920, we would defund the pool, we would defund the library, we would defund the Community Resource Center, we wouldn't be hiring a wastewater-free operator.
In fairness, wastewater-free is on an enterprise fund and not general fund.
But, you know...
Code enforcement, yes. Code enforcement is on the general...
The prior practice of the city has been to borrow from funds. So we don't even know. In any event, with our citizen members, we all agreed that Dunsmere would benefit from a five-year budget, certainly would benefit by having reserves rather than deficits. And I haven't heard from anybody how we increased revenues, other than raising the tot, the tot, in some manner. And we considered it, and we used up Todd's time and the revenue officer's time, costing this out about 1/2%, 1%, 1.5%, 2%. And now we find out that we got general taxes, special taxes. We knew the timeline was tight, and we were assured was tight, and we were assured we could do the March ballot. We listened to hours of testimony from board members of the Friends of the Library, from the Community Resource Center, and they believed that the current general fund tax was to benefit them. So there may be a good deal of wisdom to switching off of more money that goes in the general fund to who knows where and switching onto a public safety-based tax. There's a big concern about the vote level, majority, two-thirds vote, timing. So, you know, I'd like to hear from the city attorney and the city managers what options we have because basically we wasted the last three months. But to Mario's point, we're not gonna get out of a deficit by cutting everything to zero. That's not the future of this city. We're gonna get there by planning and budgeting and expecting the citizens to support that. But I'm very sorry for all the work the chair of the Finance Committee put in, but this is where we are tonight.
So I just have a quick question, um, how much of the sheriff's contract for your...
Four hundred and sixty thousand.
So even if we were to move forward with a special tax that goes towards law enforcement, that theoretically could cut the payment of that contract from the general fund. So you would still be getting, you could def, you could argue that because you're putting in a special tax for two hundred and twenty thousand a year estimated.
Would it fire?
You're basically taking, yeah.
Fire?
Fire, yeah.
The whole fire department.
Out of the general, out of the general fund, if you happen to not, okay. Because again, if you're, if you're, one of the things that you could argue is that if you're moving services out of the general fund and onto a special tax that, that is dedicated just for that, the special tax is operating similar to an enterprise fund. So then you're basically opening up two hundred and twenty thousand in your general fund budget.
Is that a majority vote or two-thirds?
It's, the, the special tax would still be a two-thirds plus one, but it would basically be set up similar to an enterprise tax where it's always dedicated to law enforcement.
Right.
So you could argue that, which we can say law enforcement and animal control. But in a way, you're still getting some money freed up in the general fund each year.
The notes you read from the June meeting were really talking about a special tax, I believe. You listed the purposes for the revenue.
We, we call it a general fund, and you said such as.
Well, I think the bigger thing is the.
The other, the other thing is what the mayor's saying is correct. Your, your, your budget on law enforcement.
What's that mean?
Will never exceed, your law enforcement budget will never exceed the revenue you would get from a, a sales tax increase.
Well, it wouldn't, so you would still be able to.
So I don't know what your budget is, but it's, and sheriff's budgets are always general fund money.
Yeah.
So, uh, if you, if you've got another source of money to pay to the sheriff, that frees up general fund money.
Right.
So if we were.
This, this is where the movie began, where the vice mayor took the leadership of negotiating with the sheriff's department. We reduced, because of general fund constraints, the amount we're paying for law enforcement because we can't afford it.
Right.
Well, we could.
We're up for renegotiation in two and a half years, at which point we'll have another hundred and forty-four thousand, that was the sheriff's increase that we didn't take, plus on the table.
But, um, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but we could amend this proposal tonight to go with a one and a half percent tax and then just recommend that.
Amend it to what?
So right now, we're assuming that this would be a one percent tax. Could we amend it tonight to say, well, if we put it up to one point five, we have six.
I, I don't know if there's enough room, you know, there's a limit on what your sales tax would be, and I don't know if that would exceed.
Even if it's a special tax?
We are, well.
I don't know.
I hesitate to say this because all my information prior to now has been off of the same several reports, but we have been told that we're allowed to go up to two percent total, county and city combined, county has zero.
Then, then, I'm not disputing that, I'd say I don't know. Okay, so you could go up to two percent.
So basically, if we were to say, if we amend this tonight and say it would be a two percent special tax, theoretically it would estimate bringing in about four hundred and forty thousand dollars. That would basically get us the base contract of where we're at right now, for your, just for law enforcement, and then, and then if we do have an increase in the future, that would have to come out of the general fund. But again.
You know, for, for the stability of the community, we consider if we're gonna go down that path, um, including code enforcement within that.
Yeah, that's right.
Part, part.
What do you think?
Law enforcement, code, law enforcement.
Animal control.
And code enforcement.
I think code, in my personal opinion, code enforcement is hard because the minute you start code enforcement, people start getting really, really upset because you're telling them what to do with their property.
Well, how many dog bites were there?
But that's animal control.
That's animal control.
Yeah, I'd also like to point out, we don't wanna max out the budget, we should maybe include fire, because we received a, a grant for law enforcement back from county taxes, um, that also has to be dedicated, so I would definitely, if we do a special tax, favor at least combining fire.
So public safety, which would be law, law enforcement.
The whole umbrella is turning.
Well, and with all due respect, we just passed a ordinance tonight, thirty days hence, Cheek Padilla could go to any private property in Dunsmere and say, you gotta clean up your vegetation, and if you don't, you're gonna get a citation, and if you don't, you're coming here for an administrative hearing. So.
I think we do have to have some specificity with law enforcement and fire. You can't just say broad public safety, or is that okay, John, for a special tax, just the same public safety?
It's.
For special tax, you have to be very specific in some.
No, I'd be more concerned about, somebody's gonna brand it as special tax if you start listing the purposes, so it's not unusual.
Branded as special.
Branded. It's not unusual, and I've, in another jurisdiction, passed a special tax, and it was the marijuana tax, as it turned out, and it was for law enforcement and code enforcement. But that, but that, that's, law enforcement, the citizens always like, uh, you know, I don't know what the situation is of the dog control, so I don't know what's.
We have law enforcement.
But, but the discussion you're having here, I mean, it's a lively discussion, an important discussion, but I, you know, it teaches me that your Finance Committee ought to, or somebody ought to plan this through with the idea of what is passable. I don't know that, and maybe.
Yeah, with all due respect, we've spent a lot of time discussing what was passable, what issues relative to our city's constraint of general fund was important. We've had multiple public hearings all summer long on this exact topic. Um, I understand that, it means it's mostly that the, the rules for going forward have been changed significantly because we didn't know, we weren't allowed to do it on, that I don't know if I'm personally in favor of moving to a special tax without perhaps using that citizens initiative. I believe we can pass a fifty percent tax. I don't know about the two-thirds.
And, and John raised the miracle. Last November, the citizens of Dunsmere, the voters, did tax and regulate for cannabis with over sixty percent support. Yeah, but they always do that. Well, but, but the point is, the community understands we need more revenue. Pardon me? The community understands we need more revenue, and in the Finance Committee, Mario argues both sides in his letter, that this is a tax largely borne by people who don't live here, whether it's the tot or the tot.
Technically, TUT is sales-based, and it does impact people here a lot. If it's TUT.
I disagree. Councilmember, I, I don't know of any marijuana tax that didn't pass anywhere. So, because basically, and it may change, but basically, the pro-marijuana people wanted it and the anti-marijuana people wanted it, so there was no opposition. Any jurisdictions have said, no. Yeah, uh, yeah, if that, it's, it's unjurisdictional to have it at all, but the, the, with respect to a citizens initiative, um, yeah, you get the both, you get the best of both worlds, but you get something else, you have a group supporting it.
Well, I think we already have significant group organizations here on the ground that very well know that, um, their funding depends upon strong general fund, as well as essential safety services.
I think the member, members themselves, the public, really, I can understand how, like, Stephen Bryant would know that for the Resource Center or, or, you know, the library, but as far as the general public, I don't think that they have a, a sense of, and we have to get them to the point where they understand, and I don't think that's an easy task, I believe.
It could be that November is the correct path, um, but we have to make significant changes today if that's going to be the case, and I'm not necessarily in favor of putting it on March as a special.
So I have something to this. I, I wanna respond to Peter's point, um, what do we do? So there really are two choices. It is, um, in my mind, it is a special tax, and it's law enforcement, and if you wanna add code enforcement, you've gotta figure out a way to make people understand that it's dog bites, it is, uh, undertaking an empty building ordinance, it is making sure that we can move properties that are vacant, um, and, uh, underutilized or absolutely key to this community to, uh, to be able to start citing these buildings so we can kickstart some economic development. But that still takes a lot of education, and we have a short time to do it. Or we go into an austerity budget for the year and we wait till November.
Well, we're almost certain to finish this fiscal year in a deficit, and we'll be in a deficit for next year.
Actually, I mean, that's if we follow forward with this budget. I think the budget's definitely very much in play, considering we make now.
Yeah, but I, you know, I will fight to the death the austerity budget option.
Um, I'd like to take a five-minute recess at this time since we've been here in a very long session about this, uh, and we've been here for a little bit, so I will recess us now until eight-ten. Thank you. We'll wait one more minute for Councilmember Bryant to get back, seeing if the rest of here is. Perfect. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the people who have stayed with us through this item. It is not a particularly fun item, uh, but we appreciate everyone being here and giving public input and being interested in a really important topic. So I am gonna start discussion, um, over here with Councilmember Art, and then move down the line if we want to kind of say where we're at right now. Um, we've been given a couple of different options, but I wanna at least give everyone a final say before anyone wants to suggest a motion.
Well, during the break, I told the city manager I am not gonna vote for anything. He is opposed to. So I guess I'm looking for guidance from our staff as to the choices we have with the notion, a half the baked cake is not what we need. That's why we come here.
Councilmember Kaisler.
I kinda would echo that. I don't wanna go against counsel, you know, get the city manager either, but, um, that's a pretty good way to put it, a half the baked cake ain't what we want. We don't wanna go into a special lesson. I feel if we go into a special lesson now, I think we might be taking a chance of losing that twenty grand or twenty-plus or not. Maybe November would be better off, would give us more time to educate, and, uh, I think that we should do it with the law enforcement aspect, law enforcement, code enforcement, dog capture, whatever, but that's palatable. That's something that everybody wants. And, and that's what kinda makes our job next year easier when the, when negotiations come up because we, it ain't coming out of general fund. It's sustaining itself. So that's, I think it's a good thing.
So Councilman Kaisler, just so I'm understanding the clarification, are you talking about a special assessment now?
I think he's talking about.
No, I'm waiting.
November.
I'm saying, wait, if we wait, I think we have a better chance of pulling it off.
I think he's pointing out that it's still before the sheriff's contract renegotiation. We started to collect just narrowly before.
But I just wanna reiterate, um, what Councilmember Art and I discussed during the break is, um, you know, there are two sides, and we need to weigh these things out, is if we try the special assessment now that included law enforcement and code enforcement, and we made sure that people understand what we're getting out of code enforcement in terms of, uh, uh, starting to cite empty buildings, uh, um, buildings that do not meet code, so we can force some key properties back into business so we're kickstarting economic development. I have no idea whether this will pass in two-thirds. That's what I would like to, I would, I don't wanna go into a hole, but if we wait until November, we are going to go into a shell.
You're gonna go into what?
Into a shell. There are things that we're going to not be able to do that is gonna be, that are gonna be very uncomfortable for the city manager.
But even if, even if we, I'm sorry, was your chair number four? Well, I'm just thinking, even if we were to do it in March, we wouldn't start receiving any of the funds for, I mean, we're still in this fiscal year together.
Yep.
So it wouldn't have any immediate impact versus March, November.
The immediate impact is we already committed to ninety thousand dollar loss of savings this year, um, all of next year's in balance, we wait till November. So it's additional. If we cut it back to balance that next year, if we keep it good for a year, then we're gonna have a whole year of very painful cuts to not just programs we like and find very beneficial to our community, essential services. I mean, everything will be up for consideration because of the percentage cut we're gonna have to make to our, our budget, so, you know, it does have an effect. Yes, we wouldn't be able to save this year's deficit, but we pass this year's deficit, no one would receive any funds.
We're deferring to you now for your, I'm sorry if we're interrupting.
Oh, no, no. Oh, I'm sorry, I interrupted you actually.
Stop apologizing.
Yeah, I asked, okay.
Can you, uh, let's have Councilmember Bryant have a little late there, is there a quick question?
Yeah.
Okay. Did Councilmember Bryant's okay?
I wanna ask a question to somebody that's been doing this a very long time. I think her opinion is crucial. Julie.
Thank you.
Think you can make this work? What's your opinion? It, it, your opinion matters, I mean.
My concern is we haven't had a council meeting in five weeks, and we've made no forward progress with what the council decided at the last council meeting. Five weeks is a long time not to get some, some more forward movement going with our, with the public, with the agencies that benefit, you know, from the city funds. And that's what scares me about potentially not having something passed as well as spending up to twenty thousand dollars to have something not pass.
Okay, we don't have no more Ms. Shelby, so.
Very, Councilmember Bryant.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I had the benefit of the annual conference of attending a, kind of a workshop on how these measures work, um, what the trends have been in California recently, and what the general political environment is predicted to be going forward. Um, and in addition to that, I got to talk to one of the presenters about forty minutes afterwards, who runs a consulting firm that helping cities do exactly what we're trying to do here. Um, I learned a great deal there, and a couple things I'd like to point out that might help us in guiding us, seem maybe a little bit counterintuitive, but generally speaking, with significant trends this way, higher amounts taxed with greater likelihood, no sunsets passed with greater, greater likelihood, um, and more specific taxes generally pass with greater likelihood, even with that, that difference. I think that the, the more specificity on what the money's used for always helps, but the other two kind of brings forward, a lot of people are just against taxes, period, and they're exhausted by all the, I mean, we ourselves have probably a level of exhaustion with the level of federal and state taxes, but if you're against taxes, you probably won't vote for this. If you are for meaningful community improvement and maintaining essential services, you want it to be effective. Um, so maybe you gotta rethink some of our discussion with the one percent and one and a half percent, and I'm perhaps interested in maybe looking into, um, you know, one of our recommendations was we look into making it go into the two-year budget cycle for kind of operating side of things. I, I wonder if we could cap, we kind of go in between the two, we could raise the full one and a half percent on a special tax, but through citizens initiative, so it only has to pass by, um, fifty percent, put it on November's ballot, uh, but to offset what needs to happen, cut the budget, cap it at the current deficit. So between the two years and a two-year budget, we can expand past that. So between the two years and a two-year budget, we can't expand past that. I know it would take quite a bit of work to generate a two-year budget, but I don't know. What do you guys think about trying to maybe bridge the gap with, we're going to happen to do austerity if it is not passed in March, but particularly like our chances in March.
Correct. I'm going to keep, I'm going to keep us on topic for tonight. So just on tonight, we're discussing this tax measure. During the break, I thought about this, but one of the things I'm going to request for future items, I believe we do need a mid-year budget workshop to discuss a lot of these things. Because there's a lot going on with that, and I think it's something bigger than just the two finance committee members doing that. So, but bringing us back to the item at hand, which is the tax measure for tonight. I, you know, as most people know, I sit in a weird position of being a staff member in one city and the mayor of another, council member in another. I literally just had this conversation on Wednesday with the city of Mount Chasta, and we discussed, in their circumstances, they just did a compensation and salary study. Guess what? We're not paid a lot. Actually, in some cases, we're fifty percent lower than the median income for some of our job positions. I am not one of those, which is fine. But we just had this conversation about, you know, looking into the future. And even the city of Mount Chasta has some uncertainties that we're going to have to deal with in the next couple, next couple, two years probably with our, with the twenty-two million dollar West Martraven fund project. So we had this discussion, and thankfully I'm in the mindset of there's three different categories for what you do. Is you can either do cut costs, you can raise revenue, or you can do cost recovery through different fees and measures. One of the things for my job, I'm mainly a general fund employee, but when I do projects with developers, the developers pay for my time in some cases, and in most cases, most of the time, but we're talking about that. So that's where the cost recovery comes from. But when we started talking about revenues, you know, that's when everybody's hair raises, and that's when we start talking about taxes. And revenues tend to be the hardest one to deal with when we're trying to get the budgets to make sense. So just having my brain in that perspective, you know, I was also looking at different taxes that don't necessarily impact the general public, you know, like a sales tax. That's going to impact everybody. Some taxes, like Councilmember Art was bringing up, the T O T, impacts just the visitors who are coming here. So that's a tax that we can easily put off on those individuals without taxing our individual residency. So, you know, my, my brain is going to, you know, I'm not, I was not a huge fan of putting this on for the March third, twenty-twenty election at the last meeting. Since we had to make, made that decision, the reason why I was looking at, how could we make this work is because that's kind of my staff member brain of going, okay, we've made this decision, let's commit to that. But listening to the discussion here tonight, I think, I think we're getting to a really healthy position of understanding that we have some huge issues. We're going to have to look at those three different silos of cost recovery, cutting costs, and raising revenue in ways that are really mindful of what the real situation of our residents are. So I would agree with the rest of the, it sounds like the majority of the council is moving towards not going forward with this measure and either relying on a citizens initiative, which we can't really, you know, vote on or force ourselves as a group. Maybe individually, that could be a different discussion on our own free time. But I think it would be smarter to go for the general election. Whether we do discuss a special assessment, whether we do discuss a general tax, I think that's something for a future meeting, and I would agree it needs to be more well thought out. It's not easy, but I think we're having a really good discussion and coming to a really big conclusion. And I appreciate the discussion that we had tonight and how respectful everyone has been about this because it is intricate and it's hard.
Yeah, I hear it.
So, Councilmember Art?
When are we meeting next? November seventh?
I believe so, yes.
I move to table this item until our next meeting and have the city manager in consultation with the city attorney give us options.
Unfortunately, the deadline is provided for that.
Yeah, so if we wanted to move on to special tax for March third, we would basically motion to not do that.
Doesn't make any difference. This issue isn't going away.
So you want the issue of the budget to be at the next meeting?
No, I, well, as I say, we, this went from consent agenda item to now the big discussion that the city hasn't had for ten years. So yes, we need to have the discussion. But what Matthew and I keep trying to say is, and what the city manager, I think, is saying is with every day that goes by, the hole, the fiscal hole will continue to get deeper. So the notion of if it is November, what is the yet? Do you even know what the yet is?
So my understanding is?
Your three-silo analysis. We have no three-silo analysis.
Okay, so what you're saying is you would like a more depth finance workshop to discuss those things, but as far as the resolution tonight to put this on for March third, twenty-twenty, do you have a motion for that?
Well, we're told by the city attorney we can't do it.
Okay, so are you guys understanding what I'm saying? We can, we can, we're going to do the workshop. We're all pretty committed to that, but whether we're moving forward with this language.
We do not move forward with it until March, and I'm not necessarily sure we do. My one issue in supporting putting it off till November is a special meeting next week where we're given options about our budget, including a balanced budget this year.
Also?
Everything on the table, including a two-year potential option. But we exclusively focus on our budget and the way to survive until next November's potential passage.
Yes.
One of the things that we haven't looked at, and this was something that Richard did just brought up before he moved north. And that is the idea, and doing this correctly and doing this by the book, that would be to come up with a loan to the general fund from one of our enterprise funds and do it at a percentage that we would pay it back monthly, but get us past the next two years or so.
So?
Back from what?
So you can't have an enterprise fund, fund, general fund?
You could have a loan, though. You could have a loan.
Well, the general fund can loan money to the enterprise funds. Because that's what we've been discussing with the?
And I'm happy to introduce a resolution that says the city will not have inter-fund.
So again, we're, we're getting on time.
Okay.
Let's get back to this. So city council members, is there a motion to move forward with a special tax on the March third, twenty-twenty?
Not for me.
I'll withdraw my motion in favor of the chair.
I will not move forward with it if we do get the commitment to direct staff to prepare said budgets and we have a special meeting next week. I find we would lay that.
I, we'll have to talk about scheduling because there is a couple of meetings next Thursday that I will be at concerning public recreation in the region. That is actually pretty pertinent for us. So.
If we're not going for March, then we don't have to have a rush to come up with the budget meeting.
Whoa, 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 yes, we do, because we have to figure out how we can physically survive until we gain funds in, what was it, April of twenty-twenty-one? So that needs to be dealt with immediately. And if we don't prioritize that, I'm not necessarily convinced we shouldn't go forward with March.
So just, just to back up, so this, so if we were going to put something on the March election, we would have to approve something tonight because it has to be due to the county tomorrow. Or, sorry, the thirty-first.
Thirty-first, thirty-first.
The thirtieth, yeah.
And if we're not going for March, then we could wait till the seventh of November and still have that meeting. There's nothing in one week that would make a difference.
We meet on, say, Wednesday, but there's still theoretically time.
I don't think we're going to get more in March, though. Not this group. I think if someone is, I think if you're personally very motivated and want to do the initiative, the citizens initiative, you can do that. I think that's a better option. I don't think this group would be able to get into the March third, twenty-twenty with a reasonable, a reasonable tax discussion.
We could certainly use more time to define this tax measure, present it better. We need to have a detailed, involved community process. My concern is simply what the deficit will going to look like. I will not support it. I don't support this year's budget. Without March, we need to revisit this year's budget because everything about this year's budget was predicated on this matter going on in budget from my perspective.
Yeah.
So I just want that to be understood as this budget is completely back in play. I would also like currently to direct our city manager, until we have a meeting, to suspend all the essential expenditures in order, you know, people are doing business coming, but nothing new or sort of different approved or asked. We really need to be understanding our situation and.
To that point, at the break, I asked the city manager, so does this mean no code enforcement officer? And he said, maybe. So if you guys are good with that, that we promised the library, we promised the school, we promised the community a dog bite guy, you better be ready to cut all of that.
I believe that's necessary. We have a reserve.
As we have been to be set up next week for code enforcement early in the week.
So I think, I think there needs to be more information.
Well, no, for sure, those that are wanting to flip this off, you need to know what next year's budget's going to look like. You need to see what we're not going to be doing.
Again, we're, we're planning on doing a budget workshop within the next two weeks. Either, either at the regular city council meeting on the seventh, which Big Dave will be here for. I think that's the bigger thing, too. Big Dave's going to be out for a couple of weeks.
He's going to be gone after that.
Yeah, yeah, correct. That's why I'm saying within the next two weeks, we'll have a budget workshop. But bringing us back to the item at hand, do we want to move forward with this or not?
And it needs to be more, if there's not, not just a workshop, but like an action item on passing a balanced budget and other alternatives from staff. That, that'd be, I think we need to really grapple with what we're forced into right now.
Because the work, the workshop will illuminate what Mario Robinho, the treasurer, is telling us. We are in a deep deficit, and the general fund is getting deeper.
So I think everybody understands that.
Well, I don't know.
Bringing us back to the item at hand, is someone going to make a motion about this tax measure for March third, twenty-twenty? Or, or do we need to have, I don't think we're going to be able to have a meeting before the thirtieth to do all of this in a.
Can we put this on a November ballot with a concerted effort to come up with a plan to do this the right way?
So just concerning the tax, and then we will jump into the other budget options that we have, and we can do that.
Can we move to increase it to one point five percent?
Well, that's something that could be done between now and then, that's.
Correct. We don't have a.
Well, I guess we want to go for the one point five.
But we're, you know from the outset that we're going to have to make up.
We, we know, yes. I think the discussion on what the tax item is going to be specifically, we will have more time if we move it to November, so I don't think that has to be decided tonight. It has to be decided pretty much tonight, or somehow we get a special meeting before the thirtieth and it's going on March. That's why there was urgency there with that number. But if, so there's a motion on the table?
I'd like to amend my motion.
Okay.
I'd like to amend it to include the idea that the city manager has explained the way most cities do this, where they reach out and have somebody come in and do a survey to determine what the, what the community is really working on doing. I'd like to amend it to say that during this period of time, we follow up with that in mind of reaching out to the public and determining what they would support.
Okay, so the motion is to move, move a tax measure to the November twenty-twenty ballot with a concerted effort to determine the exact specifics and the percentage at a future date. Please not do it a week before it's due. I think that's the bigger thing, is we're, we're up against a wall with the timeline. So is there a second to that motion?
Top second then.
So there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion at hand? And we have?
Do we get to include the spinning, like Matthew was saying?
Yeah, can we include a?
If this passes, we will then discuss that. Is that okay?
Uh, my support of it depends upon it, so I mean.
Okay.
Well, that's what I want, I want to do. I want to have support on it.
Commitment to some meaningful pass if we don't.
Do we know, do we know that, what that looks like for city staff? So if we were to say no special projects, no matching grant funds right now?
Just got the frugal.
Well, we want to be frugal, not paying what you're considering.
Okay.
See, this is, there's a larger discussion here, and I keep coming back to it. And that is that we do have reserves for when there's a tough time. We just had a tough time, you know, and it turns out to be two years and we should panic. But I think right now, considering everything we went through last year, saying that this is going to just have to be one of those years we can dip into the savings, I think that would be much more useful than trying to immediately go to a point of cutting back on things like code enforcement. So I'm just saying, all this should be part of a larger discussion, but for right now, we're talking March and November.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm looking for a meaningful commitment to look at any and all options to restart here, and government to fulfill its essential services, essentially. And I think code enforcement personally needs to be preserved in some capacity. That economic balance is very strongly tied to that, I think, at our council.
And I think, going back to it, if we want to have this budget workshop, we're at mid-budget review, and maybe that's what we use this workshop as, is discussing that and going, okay, this isn't going forward until November. Let's restructure this year for, at the mid-year budget, which we have the ability to do.
Right.
And then, and then we can get forward to needs.
That'll meet your goals.
Essentially, what I'm asking for is that we move to weekly meetings and really come up with a two-year plan, because it's going to be November, that's fine. That's a big part of our plan. We're going to go over two years as a council and come up with a two-year plan in the next same month. That's reasonable enough. It's a lot of work, maybe month and a half. But that we, we go to make this decision and then not make the other decisions that correspond to it correctly.
We ask?
Yeah, exactly.
All right, this is Councilmember Art.
To the finance chair's point, the public needs to see, and everybody on this side of the horseshoe needs to see what the rest of this fiscal year is going to look like and what the next fiscal year is going to look like. And if we're going to wait until November with the understanding additional revenue won't come in until twenty, when, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two?
Twenty-twenty?
Twenty-twenty-one.
Not twenty, twenty.
Twenty-one, twenty-one, okay.
Then for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, unless we're going to even further reduce law enforcement and cut back on everything, we're going to run a huge deficit. You gotta be ready for that.
I think, going back to the main point, I think we all understand that. I think we're all, I think, going back to, I think we are all going to go into this with a very concerted effort to get this solved.
Can we skip our meetings in the next timeframe?
How about?
Get it on the books that we're going to really focus on this.
Correct. We will do that. So again, going back. Okay.
Well, and the notion is to task sta, task staff with showing us what our options look like in this budget workshop.
Could we have four budget workshops? The first of which is our mid-year budget reviews. That would be us looking at what is the next six months going to happen. Second one is a year out, so what is next fiscal year going to look like? Year and a half, two years, and then we can do that in four workshops in four or six weeks, each one focusing on that timeframe.
I would prefer something more like, here's a workshop, here's staff's best recommendation of a balanced budget this year, a balanced budget next year. Here's, if we continue on our projection and just betting everything on a tax to come in the way in the future and what that looks like and the implications could be. And then maybe a staff's best of both worlds recommendation for, for demonstrate. And that could take some time to generate. I mean, the first workshop is development of that. The second one is a presentation of staff's findings on the subject so that we understand what we're going to, well, with the framework of all of our spending will be in the next few years.
There you go.
Did you guys write that down? Okay, so it'll probably be a minimum of at least two workshops, probably more than that. And we can definitely work on that as we go forward. So.
Are we undoing the commitments we've already voted on? Is it monitoring the code enforcement?
Potentially, that would be something we have to talk about in the workshop and understand what we have available to us.
What we need to do is come back with a series of options that allows this budget with trade-offs, and then from those options, you guys pick which is the, the, you know, the most powerful of that option.
Correct.
Okay.
For a brief, again, review, to reach the top.
It's going to be more involved than that. So, Councilmember Goi, you have a motion on the floor to move the tax measure to November with basic, and indeed, Big Dave had wanted to amend your motion to include basically what Matthew said that.
I'll amend it as such.
Okay, so we are under.
Did you got that, Julie?
No, I'm just going to.
So it's.
So we're going to move the tax, move the November ballot and.
And follow through with a process to prepare for November. And the third is that we will have a series of budget workshops as soon as possible to work out our plan going forward. Does that make sense?
And staff is?
Preparing, recommending, will prepare recommendations off of those workshops, the trade-offs, to be able to do. We can get more in the weeds about it.
Up to a balanced budget.
Yes, with the goal of a balanced budget.
And the role of the finance committee, I guess we just sit by and watch, huh?
You know, the finance committee could take the lead on this, but one piece of inaccurate information or lack of correct information in a fight that was developed and discussed for months, then the finance committee.
Yep. Yep.
Go awry. So I do think that, you know, since it's at the council level here, every decision we make, and we spend the money of the citizens of Pennsylvania, and every decision we make is tied to being able to survive if it doesn't pass in November. And yet maintaining the most economic growth we can prior to. So those two things are to be addressed.
Okay, is there any other discussion on motion and Julie, you can?
I just want to confirm. I believe what I'm hearing is move to, move the tax measure to the November ballot and to prepare a series of budget workshops moving forward with the goal of a balanced budget.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Here's a third item in there, and that is the staff will work towards preparing for the November ballot.
Yeah. Great, any other discussion on the motion?
Well, does it need to kill E or does E die in April?
Well, we haven't, we haven't gotten, or, and basically it would amend E, it would basically kill this and amend it to going to November, but we would still be able to amend this language.
Can I add, we'd like staff to limit spending to essential needs until further direction from the council?
Look to your head.
Yep.
What, what, what does that mean?
It's up to the discretion, perhaps. I, you know, what I mean here, as an example, if we say, um, some further items on our agenda tonight, it seriously changes how we view them.
Well, again, we're gonna take votes on each one of those items.
Well, yeah, I know, is that a more sure? Defund the library?
No, it is not a motion to defund the library. Um, so.
Well, we need it back.
Well, so wait, so we, we'll have to vote on each one of the items after this, so we can make that.
So that's concerned about, say, the dispersals of community promotion fundings. I mean, those were given with the understanding that if we would have this here, I need to freeze anything that hasn't been given, until we figure out what we're doing.
So I think that's more what your motion is, is to freeze the community promotion.
Well, it could include some other things too, but yes, those ones have already been given in budget. That, those are clearly non-essential items in the city, but they're important to us.
I just signed several checks.
We just proved register, so.
I don't know if I feel comfortable adding that, just because I, I, I feel like we don't understand what's going on with the budget at this moment, those two views. And so I think from this discussion, they understand that we don't want to spend frivolously. So I trust staff to do that. I don't think we need to direct them to do that.
Well, my concern is, say we've awarded someone $10,000 in compensation, they haven't collected on it yet, are budget revisions going to include revising, revising those measures?
But I think you have to say that specifically then, because it's, it's really difficult to say, and we wanna freeze.
Should we halt community promotion fundings until we continue this discussion and have further direction?
Yes.
In terms of just dispersment of funds not available currently? If you have a real problem with that, talk to us, we'll get something out.
Wait, 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 I would like that as a motion.
We have it, it's being, it's being added to this motion. I'm sorry, Julie.
So move the tax measure to November ballot, and include a series of budget workshops moving forward with the goal of a balanced budget, staff preparing the November ballot.
Correct.
Okay?
Okay, so two things, um, two things, uh, for us to operate. Reasonably, we are going to need a planner, and we're gonna need a code enforcement officer. Are you saying put those two things off right now?
No.
No, that's not part of your new project, so that we're talking.
I think, I think he's just narrowed it down to just the community promotion staffs.
So.
May I expand to grade three? Grade three is.
That's a, that's a.
That's enterprise one, so that's not, yeah, that's not much.
But if you continue the hiring process, it'll be my day.
But yeah, so you, you requested to add to Councilmember Deutsch's motion, this is way too many motions on the motion, but you requested to add the, the stipulation of, to halt community promotion payouts until we're completed with the workshops that we will work on in the next two weeks.
Um, before I make that amendment, could I just ask, where do we stand in terms of the dispersments of that?
You don't know if the tax means that?
Huh?
You don't have an understanding of the tax season? Where, we've paid half on most.
But not all.
But not all. Uh, we pay a little over half on one. How specifically do you like?
Well, that's, that's fine, I just.
That's fine, because similarly, our majority.
Probably like 70% paid or 60%.
But this is a freeze, tell me reevaluate my financial position.
So in five threes, the community promotions payout until we basically lift it.
I'd like to follow the temporary freeze.
Yeah, until we've voted to lift it, how about that?
Okay, so, but getting back to my point, there are two things that the city needs to operate, and that is code enforcement and planning.
And that has not been mixed.
And our planner that we've had on staff has resigned. Um, she doesn't have, have the bandwidth, and we have a planner that has the bandwidth and is well-known, and we wanna move on that.
So, so that will be a separate new business item, and from what I'm hearing from Councilmember Brian's request to Councilmember Deutsch, is he would just like a freeze on the community promotions payout. And that freeze will be lifted once we pass another motion to lift that freeze.
So those four items, no more, just those four.
Sorry.
So.
Words are fine.
So if the botanical garden or our community resource center wasn't lucky enough to get a check, too bad.
No, they wait until after the freeze.
That's too bad.
Well, I agree, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to go with the flow here.
You told Mr. Brian.
Okay, so is there any other discussion at the motion at hand? Seeing none, we will move into a vote, I will take a roll call vote, just to be very specific about this. Councilmember Deutsch.
Hi.
Councilmember Brian.
Hi.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Hi.
Councilmember Arth.
Yo.
Myself is a yay, so motion freeze, just to summarize, we're gonna move to a tax measure on the November ballot. Staff will work on that preparation of that ballot information and bring that back to council. We're going to have a series of workshops in the next two weeks, three weeks, however many we need, to discuss the budget in depth, and the options that we have, and staff will prepare items for us for trade-offs, with the goal of balancing the budget and creating two, well, not and creating, we've only voted on the balance. And then the fourth is, we are putting a temporary freeze on community promotion payout until another motion is, is made to open that freeze. Cool?
Cool.
Cool, thank you. We will now resume with our regular system. I'm going to be putting the consent of item A to B as the last item after 11C. Um, so we'll move back to 11A, which is approved planning contract with planner pressure.
Is that, that might need it anymore?
No, please go, you're expensive.
I see, glad to see you, John, thanks, Governor.
Not as expensive as I'd like to be.
Okay, we still appreciate you.
How did we do?
I don't use attorney's spending.
Yeah. Gentlemen, could you, uh?
It's hard to whisper with microphone.
With the light poles, and we need to go on.
I'm sorry, I think that, I'm out of here.
I'm throwing you on the little light poles.
I'm going, I'm going to sit in order.
Okay, thank you, John. City manager, you cause planner contract.
Planner contract. So, uh, we have, uh, Rico here, uh, that is operating his services. He is well-known in the community. He is, uh, operating his services at probably a little lower than, uh, rate as a planner. Um, and we desperately need a planner to continue, uh, city operations.
Great.
$95 per hour.
How was that compared with before?
Uh, a non-professional planner at $24 now.
But do you plan to reassess your planning fees to anticipate that?
We are looking at reassessing our planning fees to make sure that the climate pays to review applications and do planning type work, or actually recouping the cost of that time relative to Rico's, um, rate.
So we're treating it similar to day's man?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmembers, are there any other questions?
Um, I just have a question on the subcontracts, uh, paragraph nine, 12. Uh, is, is that something that's just standard in here, or you, how do you use the subcontract element of it?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have the contract with me, I apologize.
Rico, could you come up to the mic and give me a word?
Yeah, so I apologize, I don't have the contract with me to know what language you're referring to, but if it's about subcontracts?
Yes.
Uh, that would be if you needed, um, so a lot of my clients ask me to do environmental work for them. So if I need to hire somebody to do a special study? Thank you.
Okay.
Then, uh, that would be a subcontract.
Okay.
So, so if you need a traffic study, noise study, air quality, something of that sort?
Okay, but through this contract, so you'd be charging $95 an hour, and then charging them, but they'd be charging you $16 an hour, something of the sort?
So there, no, if you, first of all, I'm not going to be doing anything without the city's authorization. Um, I'm under direct expenses and billing rates, which is actual cost plus 10%, and that 10% is obviously for me to manage the individuals.
And so, yeah, just to reiterate, so typically if we're planning with something like that, if you are doing a traffic study, that would be on the developer to pay that fee, and you put together a contract to recoup that cost. So even if you were to, the only time that we would probably have to pay for Rico out of like general funds or anything, is if it's like an ordinance we ask him to write, or if it's like a planning product, we ask him to write on behalf of the city.
Can we ask the finance director what budget impact we're gonna have?
Well, that's kind of a dot at this point. We budgeted about $5,000 in one account, $7,000 in another, so we have that to play with. We, we, we give our lean.
If we keep the same hour, what's the, or, keep, yeah.
So, in essence, like you're asking for Rico to work four times faster.
Just a second, sorry, just a second. Okay, I think we're safe. Wait one more?
So it is on us.
Here we go, just go.
Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to get some sense of this. I imagine as a professional, and we've seen it, you seem to be very efficient and competent, so we probably will reduce the actual time it takes to process things.
Well, I can't comment on the, the speed that your prior planner worked, but I will say, you know, I, in every city that I've worked as the current planner, uh, everyone's got different expectations. You know, in the time that I've been here in Dunsmere, I've worked with, what did I say, six city managers?
Yeah.
With those six city managers, every city manager had a different level of, um, tasking, the planner. So, you know, to ask, you know, what's actually gonna be required, I, I couldn't say. And as far as, uh, you know, these extra costs, uh, the reality is, I don't know what Dunsmere has been up to lately. I know that I did this job for about five years in the past, and, uh, I don't see any, you know, large tasks coming up for the city, unless you've got a, a larger project. You know, what, you know, you don't have, uh, you don't have any land to subdivide to have special studies that you need to worry about. Um, you know, really, it's, you, my guess is you're looking for someone to address sign permits and developing the store district.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions for city staff or Rico? Seeing none, we'll move into public comment. Would anyone like to make a public comment on the contract?
Um, yes, very quickly, that.
So we're gonna go back to your comments, just.
Well, wait, Julie, get ready to start, 'cause you stopped me now, I gotta rethink.
Yeah.
Okay, ready? Well, first, oh God, thank you, Mayor, I really appreciate it. Secondly, um, we don't have much reserve, we shouldn't drop below 20. So on the Rico issue, um, if he is working on a contract basis as stipulated, if, it, it really the, I think the big waste of time for him is actually having, and you could answer this, actually dealing with the customers, dealing with the clients, and there's a plus win there. If he is there on a contract basis, and he is spending a lot of time, the greater likelihood is it's a bigger project and good for Dunsmere. If it's a, um, a smaller project, he's probably gonna be able to push it through more efficiently, and actually, we might actually benefit. Thank you, Matthew, thank God you're my hawk now, and, and, uh, I'll beg my apologies to you, but it's good to see you back where you belong. And things are not so bad for the city of Dunsmere. We just need to explain where we are and where we're gonna be, as, as you point out, we need to know what the trends are, and we need to get clear.
Sorry, I appreciate you, but keep on top.
Okay, so the main thing is, uh, I'm glad you're having this discussion about how we're gonna pay for him.
Thank you. Any other public comment related to the potential contract with Rico Tinsman for planning? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. We approve Rico's, um, contract. Can we sit down and move to a deposit-based system instead of a flat-rate fee system for planning, so that he can estimate the number of hours per project based on the size, and then that way we're able to recover costs at a higher rate? If you wanna go really in-depth, we can go really in-depth, but that's basically moving our fees over to a different system to others.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you sound like you're a planner, so.
I literally just talked about that, I'm gonna say, so.
And we discussed this, yes, you.
Cool, all right, so that's, that's another way to ensure that, so building, planning, some of your, your essential permitting processing services can be done in a way where 95% of their time is recouped through development fees, and not necessarily be onerous to one development over another. So again, basically moving to a deposit system, basically says if he has a really simple permit, and it takes him two hours to do it, but he has the same type of, it, it comes down to like conditional use permits, for example, that could be something to look at, especially with cannabis going on, um, and it's kind of similar to the other contract services we have with the cannabis contractor that we have, is, you know, you can definitely go, this is what I'm estimating for the hours, and then give 10% on top of that for contingency, and if they don't use it, we reimburse the person who applied for that fee. So it's in addition to the contract discussion, but I think it's really important that we can be really smart about this, that it doesn't overtax the general fund, and there could be more help with recouping those cost recoveries.
May I add something?
Yeah.
So, uh, one of the things with the SB 2 planning grant is, uh, I don't know if you've all, but there's a fee study in there.
Yeah.
Um, typically, uh, at least when I do fee studies, the recommendation on planning fees is people pay the cost.
Yeah.
You know, there, there's, there's no reason to subsidize, uh, private development, at least not, uh, depends on the project that, that comes up, right? But in general, just, uh, pay for the general public planning efforts is not advisable.
Okay, thank you.
Can we, uh, pop the contract with Mr. Pittman outside of here?
All right, is there any discussion on the motion at hand? Bobby Dotfick, or, or authorizing, I believe it's authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Rico Tinsman for planning services? Councilmember Arth, if you have a comment on the motion at hand?
Yes, I mean, I'm going to vote in favor of it with the expectation that at the first budget workshop, we will see two years worth, two fiscal years worth of, I do not want to micromanage the city manager. The city manager has very deep talents in the area of economic redevelopment planning, so I want him to realistically estimate from a traveler's hotel to the house of glass, how much the city planning effort is going to cost us, so that we all say, oh, we can't afford it, or yes, we can.
Okay, uh, any other discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we will move into a roll call vote. Um, this is in favor of authorizing the city manager to enter into a planning services contract with Richard Tinsman. Councilmember Deutsch.
Hi.
Councilmember Brian.
Hi.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Arth.
Thusey, yes, yes.
And myself, uh, yes. All right, motion freeze.
Anything else to read this evening?
No, please go home.
Thank you, very, very.
You're on the clock now, so please go home. All right, thank you, everybody. We will now move on to item 11C, discussing, consider participation in employment risk management authority, Irma, with SCOR.
Hey, that was beautifully said.
Thanks.
Down to the bottom line, dollars, I do have budget for training and education, uh, Down to the bottom line, dollars, I do have budget for training and education, this could be part of that, so it could be a zero budget line item, just wanted to throw that there to start, because that seems to be the topic of the evening. All right, so Irma is a liability coverage for employment practice liability. So it's things like our wonderful employees that are disgruntled, that don't like us any longer, the city any longer, so they will bring up lawsuits. So this protects us against those types of things. The presentation from last time, from Marcus Beverly, if you remember, so SCORE, Small Cities Organized Risk Effort, is what we are a part of. They provide, or so the cities banking layer, so we are on the hook for zero to twenty-five thousand. Then there's a gap from twenty-five thousand until five hundred thousand of employment practice liability. This Irma coverage will fill that gap. So we do have coverage from five hundred thousand to ten million. So don't worry about five hundred to ten million. We're just talking about the gap between twenty-five thousand and five hundred thousand. So the costs, you can see, I don't have the page number on me, but...
Fifty-six?
Fifty-six. So there are the different levels, the retention levels, so that is the money that will come out of the city of Dunsmere should something happen. So the retention level, you see there are four, twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand, one hundred thousand. So costs associated with those four retention levels are shown in the paper. So we can decide, one option, nothing at all, and then the other four options you see there. So do we want to have a coverage essentially starting at twenty-five thousand, starting at fifty thousand, starting at seventy-five thousand, starting at a hundred thousand?
What's your recommendation?
The other cities are at twenty-five thousand, because I think essentially that's where our banking layer, our standard layers, you know, stops or starts, wherever you want to look at it. Right? So cities already on the hook for zero to twenty-five. So essentially, the other cities are choosing from twenty-five to five hundred.
Awesome. Just keep saying thousand, because we're at twenty-five thousand, sorry, I don't want people paying for these.
Yeah, fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand. So in the rest, in my staff report, I do say at the fifty thousand retention limit, which seemed like a good number, but I do want to say that we should be fine according to any level of that, I guess the subtotal line item. We should be fine with any of those numbers.
Any questions for city staff?
This is a three-year participation. So I just wanted to keep that in mind.
Where, where and how does it come up with the budget?
So I'm thinking it'll be, oh yeah, so it's another piece. We have to do central harassment training, so I've been looking at, that's a state mandate that we have to be required each two years, has to be two hours of central harassment training. I think even council members have to do it as well, so, you might have been in there.
I've had several.
Yeah, you know, yeah.
Not for any issues, but because of that.
Right. So all, all city staff, thirteen employees, you have to do it. All right, it's mandated for us. So that cost, we have to do anyway. So that's where I was talking about the training and education budget line item that we have already in the budget. So essentially, I can, with the permission of council, allocate that training and education budget line item to cover anywhere from the three thousand to the four thousand dollar. And this is a yearly cost. We would be starting maybe January one, so this would be less. These are estimates, though.
Any other questions for staff to move into public comment?
Have we ever participated in this particular area of coverage before?
We have never participated in Irma.
Or just, so we've always had zero to five hundred thousand, is that us?
Twenty-five thousand.
Zero to twenty-five. Zero to five hundred.
No, we've got zero to twenty-five covered as twenty...
Well, well, we still pay, we pay out zero to twenty-five thousand.
Regardless.
Regardless, yeah.
Historically gone with five hundred.
So we have never had this coverage of twenty-five or whatever, two, five hundred thousand. That is right.
And have we had cases, how many cases have we had on that particular night?
Zero. We've had no loss room, we've had zero loss room.
In our history of participation with SCORE?
For employment practices, a zero loss room.
Do you feel like it's warranted at this time that we get this?
I am risk averse, so I think it's warranted. Lots of, all the other cities do it, they say it's very cheap. It's, we have to spend money on this employment training, so that's a, that's a sunk cost right there. So this Irma will supply that, I forgot to mention that, Irma will supply this training to us.
That's a busy piece, sir.
Yeah, sorry. Irma will supply this training to us free.
We are pretty cheap.
So we have to spend something amount of...
What's the typical cost of the training?
I don't know, I just saw like a hundred and something dollar a person, so that could be as cheap as like fifteen hundred bucks, but normally when somebody comes out, it's, it's in the three thousand.
Yeah, I think the guy who did Shasta's was out of Concord. I think that was like the closest person we could get that would contribute to training and certification.
Right. But I think Shasta participates in Irma.
Would that be whole staff and council then, would attend a single session, is that how it would work?
That's what I would prefer.
I don't think he'd necessarily get away with that just because of our different rotations and getting new people every two years, so that might be more than that, so because it's every two years, so we have to train. Oh, maybe it's difficult out to once a year, but anyway, sorry, maybe that bugged, or Deborah, or Chad, I'm tired. Any, and digress, do we have any other questions for staff at this point before we move into public comment? We are going to move into public comment now and continue to move through the night. Any public comment on Irma for participating in such program with SCORE? Seeing none, we'll look into discussion. Is there any?
I made a motion to a job resolution, twenty-one, what's the number?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-nineteen dash twenty-four resolution authorized participation in Irma at the fifty thousand dollar retainment option.
By title of?
By title of.
Is it a second?
I'll second.
The second by councilmember Deutsch, is there a discussion on the item at hand? Why fifty and not twenty-five?
Because that's what the suggestion motion is, and it's a direct suggestion motion.
Okay, are you cool with that, or...
It's up to the world, the council.
Yeah, well, you've got, your deal would be fifty, it's three thousand.
He had said twenty-five.
I, I think twenty-five would be a nice retention level.
And that's a much cheaper cost for annually?
No, it's more expensive annually.
It's more expensive.
Oh, it's more expensive? Oh, okay.
It's four hundred dollars more expensive a year.
Okay.
So would you spend four hundred dollars a year to get twenty-five thousand dollars worth of safety net?
Okay, I get where you're going, I'm covering.
Should you want me to amend that to twenty-five?
No, I think he's fine with it.
I would like you to do whatever you would like to do.
Okay. I, I was confused and wanted clarification, I apologize, I'm very tired, and my brain's everywhere. Councilmember Arce, do you have a comment on the motion?
I just wanted to ask the city manager if you have a recommendation on how.
I would suggest going at the fifty thousand dollar level where we're at right now. Normally, I would say twenty-five thousand, but if we could say wherever we can, I would go to fifty.
Okay. Any other discussion on the line at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a roll call vote, since we're spending money. Councilmember Deutsch.
Hi.
Councilmember Brian.
Hi.
Councilmember Keisler.
Hi.
Councilmember Arce.
I.
And myself, Enthusia, yes. So the motion carries.
What's left?
We are now going to move to, the consent agenda item that was moved to new business, so it's item eight B, which is a fifty-fifty grant with the Department of Forestry and then the Fire Department. How about city staff?
So we could award a, a grant to purchase six handheld radios that we desperately need at a cost of eleven thousand, three hundred and three dollars, but we have to take a half of that cost.
Can we take up the half of that cost with, is it measure A? Measure A, which is the fire equipment fund?
I'd have to check, I can't answer that up.
I think I asked you about his vehicles only.
Okay.
Maybe if you say these radios...
You're crowding yourself right now. And, and...
This is already in the budget, FYI.
Okay, it's in the budget.
So we are discussing raising some portions, so I think it is a discussion that needs to happen. Again, we are in council questions of staff right now, so are there any other questions before going?
Yeah, my question is, what's the timeframe for this grant, before we lose it?
I don't know, actually.
Chief might know.
Well, yeah.
If you read it, it says that in a short time, things are going to be off to the lead.
Well, it says that they're no longer in production, so I mean, my immediate question, especially, you know, related to fire measure, I would have known simply because of our position, I think it must be a decent coverage, but I don't think it's necessary at this point. Same with this, if they're going to last for two years, I'd be much more comfortable revisiting and buying the radios in two years. But that's something I don't have the insight into.
So we, we have a grant right now, and the issue with the chief is he can't find parts to keep the radios that he has running, because they're just not in production anymore.
That's what the not in production means, the existing ones again.
Do we have any other cost of maintaining the current, I know we can't really find the parts, so I'm assuming that the parts, if we do find them, are much more expensive.
If they were just discontinued, then it could be several years before they'd be dysfunctional, but...
If they're, if they are completely running out, then that's just information.
That's a big, yeah. And I know, I personally know radios are very, very expensive, especially at that level. To me, this goes into the category of stuff we should freeze, probably, probably the bigger plan.
Really?
So wait, 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 before we get into discussion, we are just at council questions. We have not moved to public comment yet, so we're going to put a pin in that. Do you have any other questions for tonight?
It's mostly just relative to whether we have time to consider our position before we make this decision. I'm happy to potentially go forward with it, it's very important, but that's the key thing, whether we have an option to buy in December or December now.
We might have till June thirty, we might have till the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, then, thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions of staff, we're going to open this up for public comment.
Osteri programs can backfire on councils. You know, we got to make sure that we're doing politically sound decision-making, which is, if they need the radios, and it's the Fire Department, it has to be taken care of. There are a few options that haven't been laid on the table as far as filling a hole in our budget and the revenues that will be coming forward, so don't get too excited. Let's get through the numbers, let's get the city manager and talk through it before we get too draconian.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the purchase, potential purchase of radios for the Fire Department? Seeing none, we will close public comment. You may resume.
All right, here. It's Fire Department, I want them to have the best, ooh, best radios, best radios they can get, I mean, I can't picture paradise and somebody going, yeah, I didn't get no signal. That doesn't work for me. So I, I want to have the best radios possible, and if they got a grant to do this.
Would it be all right to table this item to the next meeting so that we can get more information from Dan? Because I would really like to make sure that this could or could not come out of measure A. I, I trust that it could be just vehicles, but maybe we can just double check, because if it can come out of measure A, which is something, it's, it's earmarked to the Fire Department, it would make this decision a little easier. So if it's all right with council, I'd like...
I move we table.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on my position, it's, it's not that I don't want the Fire Department to have perfectly functional radios, it's just the honest question, if I'm going to, will they last two years, that'd be something the chief could describe this.
Great. So there's a motion to table this item to the next Oscar meeting.
Exactly.
There's a second by councilmember Keisler, discussion on the matter at hand. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor of table the items to a future meeting, considering five percent high.
Fine.
Opposed, a chance, extension, motion carries, under call. All right. We got through consent agenda P and E, we have gotten through eleven A, eleven B, and eleven C. We are now on to item number twelve, which is future agenda items. I'm going to, I'm going to kind of take over this time right now to kind of summarize everything that's happened in this meeting. So there has been a request to talk about the historic district and the mechanisms of that, there's been a request about the green waste waste control options, which I brought up to the city manager about getting that going sooner rather than later. And then there was a, there was a brief discussion about chemical controls, which was stemming out of the sort of lipo, lipo phosphate, which is an option as well. I'm just going to say right now, we have kind of set the priority of the budget and those workshops with the budget, so I would like to, you know, direct city staff to focus on that for right now before getting to these three items, since we are in a little bit of a dire strait for that. Is that amenable to the council?
Absolutely, yeah, yes.
Okay. Peter?
No, we're good.
Okay. All right. Any other items for future agenda that I had forgotten that I haven't talked about? Councilmember Arce.
Well, first of all, as far as the protocols we passed earlier this year, I don't think we're following them as the agenda, especially the two member pre-agenda review meetings that are ad hoc, that they don't have at all.
Correct.
I would suggest you work with the city manager, so we actually have a process.
We had that discussion. The issue that we've run into is Todd's been getting used to everything, it's been tied up, so I will be sending an email to get everyone's schedules, so that we can set up a consistent...
So we have a preset date before the agenda, because we're not even close to all when what we agreed we're going to do.
Correct. And it does take some time, and we're trying to, you know, deal with that. So I will be sending an email to get schedules, so that we, the idea is to set up one day after the regular meetings that we can all anticipate, and then we'll basically just rotate through that one day, with very rare occasions of, say, big days, you know, have a technical problem, can't make that day, and we can sub in the next person.
Well, I, I would say when everybody gets a clear shot, so it would be a tendency to rotate it.
Correct. It would be, it would be rotated every single time unless you can't make that one day because something is essential, chemical or whatever.
Right, so that'll happen soon.
Yeah, I, I plan on doing it this week, I will send out an email tonight. I found out that for some reason Survey Monkey, or the doodle pole we have to pay for now, and so I ran into that and did not want to pay for doodle pole for this one, so...
Over the minutes of our last meeting, there were several council members besides myself, who would like a presentation of the Union Pacific Company. I would like the city manager, the mayor, to invite representative with notion, again, I signed a pretty big check going to Union Pacific, but had a contact name on it, whatever we're paying for. Parking, did we ever get a response to the letter you sent?
I have not touched base with the city manager on that, but we can talk about it, yeah.
The river pollution, what's going on in the river? At the community center meeting, several of the presenters said that Union Pacific needs to be a partner on fire prevention, and last but not least, Mossbury Trail. They are not partnering with the city, and I think we need to develop that partnership.
Okay.
I would also consider moving maybe, then that being the first workshop or the second, maybe when we're getting further into what our two-year budget would look like, and what direction we choose to go, having a focused time on economic development and what we are spending in the next two years would really encourage that.
And yeah, I think that would be included in the budget.
I think that's, it's about time that...
I think it would be nice, just again, if we were able to also, you know, back to myself and Todd, just to reiterate, so we get this list, we're a little tired. If you do have some specific concerns for the budget workshops, and you want to make sure that that is discussed, I would invite you to email Todd and Blake and say, could we please touch on some points about this, bring them up, and then I just don't want them to get forgotten. And I think once we get home, we'll absorb what happened tonight, we're going to have a couple of other questions or other things we'd like to say.
Are you saying we have to absorb all this?
Yes, yeah, absorb and try to understand. Councilmember Arce, I'll just listen to you.
I've been trying since I was elected to this body to get the city to engage in a vision and planning exercise.
I think we talked about...
Several months ago, I had a second, and it never gets on the agenda.
So again, I think we talked about partnering that with councilmember Deutsch's efforts within neighborhood projects.
I will simply make the point that until we engage in this process, the budget just sort of hangs out there. If we don't know where we're going, if we don't know where our plan is, how are we supposed to budget and decide what's important and what's not? So why does never even gets to be, of course, now we have a planner, so maybe one of these days, but again, the protocols say when the second, it goes on the agenda, and it doesn't, it hasn't for a year. Part of the budget, and I ask that it be made crystal clear in the first budget workshop, is how much are we going to spend out of the general fund on the airport?
Oh, God bless it.
So just let him get through his list.
With the notion, if we're prioritizing, I would rather be spending on the library or the pool at the airport, of course.
Just let him get through his list.
The last one is, working with the mayors of a couple of other cities, unaware that we then, Mount Shasta, were successful in getting one percent loans through the California Energy Commission, and those loans enabled them to install solar, to make their city halls energy efficient, that for both cities, it penciled out, even with a consultant to steer the process all the way through, it pays back. Why in the world wouldn't we be trying to cut down... it is that, why in the world wouldn't we be trying to cut down our...
There's a bigger, there's a bigger discussion with that, and it is not break even.
It must, because I understand that both cities said yes.
Anyway, we, we don't have the item on the agenda for discussion, please continue through your list.
I'm hoping we do get it on the agenda. And then the last we discussed at the beginning, and that is the empty building ordinance that we have. I would like to sponsor that, and I heard several colleagues agree that that would be something that would help as we try to move forward with our economy.
All right, we've got the list.
I assume none will show up on the agenda?
Not for some time, because I believe we're prioritizing the budget workshops at this point.
With one exception, I think the vision itself will have to be very important in discussing where we're going with budget next year.
Yeah.
And that's going to be the same subject.
Correct, so we may include that. We're good? Because at the end of the day, you know, we have this big list, but we only have so much staff time and capacity. So, we're going to be prioritizing the vision and the budget. Councilmember Deutsch, are you adding to the future agenda list? I don't want to get into a discussion about the airport tonight.
No, I'm not going to, no.
Okay, please, okay, go ahead.
No, definitely not. I just want to say this, you know, in larger picture, I felt like there's all kinds of things I'd like to do, but I think we all recognize that with a new person coming on board, it takes time to get up to speed, and I think he's doing a great job. So, I'm looking forward to doing the things we want to do. And I think he's probably had his own earnings discussion so far, so if he's with us, then we can move forward. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. All right, anything else for dinner?
I'm fine there.
All right, seeing none, we'll move into a German, all those in favor of German, seeing none, aye, saying aye.
Right, aye.
We are learned.